Welcome, everybody, to the Ashland Planning Board meeting on September 10 of 2020. This meeting is brought to you via Zoom and it's also being broadcasted on WACA, Ashland's Public TV Station. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, this meeting is being held virtually. If anybody is watching at home and is looking to dial into this meeting, I do just want to mention that the meeting ID number is The password is 986447. If you are dialing in by phone, the number to dial is 16465588656. And the meeting ID again would be 872-7912-2959. Password 986447. If you are looking to make a comment as a member of the public, I believe it is *6 to raise your hand and it's *9 to unmute yourself. So with that said, the first item on our agenda is going to be at 7:15. This is a public hearing for 1 East Union Street and 12 and 16 Union Street for a special permit and site plan review. I will read the public notice into the public record. The Ashland Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday, September 10, 2020, at 7:15 via Zoom video conference to hear the petition of the Town of Ashland, care of HKT Architects requesting a site plan, excuse me, requesting a special permit, design plan review and site plan review per Chapter 40A, Section 6 of the Massachusetts zoning act and Chapter 282, Section 8.6, Section 9.3, special permits, Section 5.3, site alteration special permit, Section 9.6, design review plan, and Section 9.4, site plan review for the Ashland bylaws. The applicant is seeking a special permit for a new 24,000 square foot, three-story public safety building, carport, trash enclosure, and modular firing range for the Town of Ashland Police and Fire Departments. This property in question is located at 1 East Union Street, 12 and 16 Union Street, assessors map 15, lots 76 and 78 in the Wildwood Mixed Use District Area B. And so with that said, we can, I will hand it over to Dale, the Planning Board Chairman. And Dale, we can therefore hand it over to Janet, who will introduce the architectural team. And then also, I believe, Joe Mignani, who is Chairman of the Public Safety Building, would like to also say a few words before the applicant goes through their presentation to the board. Please note Chief Vincent Alfano is on the call along with Chief Keith Robey from the Fire Department, along with Jen Ball, Assistant Town Manager, Town of Ashland. So Dale, the stage is yours.
Thank you. So we're going to hear from Janet first?
I think we're going to hear from Joe Mignani.
Okay, Joe first. Joe? You have the microphone.
I'm going to mute myself there. Thank you, Dale, and good evening to the Planning Board. We appreciate you taking the time to listen to what we have to provide you this evening. But I wanted to give you folks a brief rundown of the activities that the Public Safety Building Committee has actually done since 2018. Doesn't sound like we've done an awful lot, but in retrospect, we have. I would like to introduce Steve Mitchell, who was the Vice Chair of the Committee, Chief Alfano, Chief Robey, Brett Walker, Peter Chisholm, Mike Herbert, Jen Ball, and Jeff Thurber, who came in as a resident and was very interested in this project and is sitting down and helps us as a collaborator and a consultant. He has his background in senior estimating and construction work. He's been very, very helpful and very resourceful. As you know, that we have Architects HKT. Janet will be doing a presentation this evening along with others. Our OPM is John Lemieux from Vertex. And I would just like to say that this afternoon, we received 10 applications for general contractors, which is a pretty good number for people that are looking to do work that may hold beneficial to us. We'll wait and see if that actually is true. And we have 106 subcontractors that applied. And our team will be vetting each contractor and each subcontractor, general contractor, starting this weekend and hopefully have everything done by next week so we can make an additional presentation. To date, we've had two Zoom public hearings, public forums. First one was May 21st and the most recent one was August 4th. We are planning on having a third public forum near the end of September. In addition to the public forums that we've had, WACA has provided time for us to do a film regarding the two locations and the site involving Chief Alfano and Chief Robey, along with representatives of HKT to give us a brief history of what we plan on doing and what we hope to do for the future. It's the goal and the intent of the Public Safety Building to design and to build a facility which will last this community for 50-plus years. We have made some serious deletions with respect to the size. That's why we went three stories, so we won't have this sprawling building that looks huge. But we made the most out of the land that we had available to us and we appreciate the work that HKT has put into it and their designers. It wasn't an easy site to design and develop. And I'm sure that Janet will be happy to explain that. We've, we're looking, we're looking to have an additional forum shortly. And we know that Chief Alfano and Chief Robey put a lot of time and effort into it with their department personnel in designing and helping design a very functional facility that will work for all of those folks who will be working there and literally residing there on the Fire Department side. So there's been a lot of time and effort put into it and it was greatly appreciated by everybody and having their input. The other thing I would like to add is that we, in keeping in mind that the town has made a commitment to the green environment and green initiative, we have gone geothermal and that has cost us a little more to do that. But we felt it was the right thing to do and keeping in line with the town's edict to stay, to stay geo, to stay green. And so, and you'll be hearing that as well through, through the next few minutes during this presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to, or all of us would be happy to answer them after the presentation is completed. I think I've hit everything and everyone. The only thing I didn't do, did I give a list of all the community members? See, I'm having one of those senior moments, guys, sorry, what can I say? It's one of those things when you get old, you know? But at least I have a roof, it'll bounce back that I remember. So with that, I would like to turn it over to Janet and I would like to thank you, Dale, for the time to do a brief introduction to our program and to the Public Safety Building.
Sure, thank you.
Okay. Hi, I am Janet Slamenda, Principal for this project from HKT Architects. And with me tonight is some of my team members and I'm going to point them out if they would raise their hands. From Par Corporation, I have Lance Hill, who is the Lead Engineer on the project, Lindsay Macamur, who is our go-to person on this site and she'll be giving a good part of the presentation tonight. We have Amy Archer, who is a Transportation Traffic Engineer. And from our landscape group, we have Nancy Lasek and she'll be talking all things green, hopefully. And I wanted to thank the committee that we've been working with. It's a 10-person committee. They've been working really hard to get the best project we can and meet all those things that Joe talked about, about operationally sound and serving that community for the next 50 years. On our professional design team, besides the architects and the people I mentioned, we have site civil engineers, environmental engineers, geotechnical, traffic and structural engineers, landscape architects, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, fire protection and technology engineers, a code consultant, a professional cost estimator and a specifications consultant. So it's a much bigger team. These are, you know, covering all the bases of a building as complicated as this. As for the process of how we got to where we are right now, we started this study in 2017, although the town has been working on this part project much longer, at least 2007, 2008. But we started in 2017 with a study. And in that study, we were doing programming to figure out what the departments needed. And then we went from there into site assessment. And once it became clear that the site on Union Street best meets the needs of the town, we did a more focused review of that site, knowing that the site itself was going to be complicated. And so we did some exploration of subsurface conditions primarily so we could figure out what the cost of that might be. We have really good information about what costs buildings are, but sites are always very different and always the wild card. So, so we did that. After that, after that phase was completed and the recommendation was made, we began our study phase for the actual building and site. But with this, with the building committee, the 10-person building committee, the site and the building work didn't begin until a pretty exhaustive site analysis was done with the environmental engineers, traffic engineers, civil engineers and geotechnical because of the complexity of the site. And we knew, unlike other projects that have flat sites or less complications, the site was going to be very important to resolve early on and to get a really good handle on it. So we did a lot of preview work before we put any pen to paper, so to speak. And the other critical element to any public safety building is the location of the apparatus space for the Fire Department. We've got to get the response vehicles out of the building quickly, efficiently, and that's very important. So putting all those pieces together was our very first step. Once we had an idea where the building should fit on the site, we began the notion of planning for the building and planning for the site, working hand in hand with all the site needs. And those concepts were presented to the committee, who really looked closely at them, asked us a million questions. We worked with them to understand the site. And from there, we became really closely working with both of the chiefs and their departments so that we could present a scheme that met the operational needs of these two departments. If we don't get the operations right, we failed at our job. And so we worked really hard with both chiefs to make sure that happened. We were looking to resolve the efficiency, storage and operations security and look at a building that was going to last for the next 50 years. So after that, you know, we moved on to the more detailed stuff and we have a presentation I'd like to do right now for you. I'm going to make a very brief beginning part. Lindsay is going to jump in, Amy and Nancy and Paula at, oh, I forgot Paula. Oh, my God, Paula is our project manager from HKT Architects. I so focused on the engineers. I will ask them as they do start their presentation, just to remind everybody who they are. And I ask your indulgence as we go through this Zoom meeting and we transfer from person to person. So I am going to put up a presentation and let me know if you see it. Do people see that? Yes?
No, not yet, Janet.
No, nothing? Did you make me a presenter, Emma?
Yes. Can you see the share screen button at the bottom?
Okay, hold on. Yes, okay. Let's see if this happens again. Now, do you see it? No?
There's one, there's one more button you may have to push down there after you select that screen. There's another one that says share.
Yep, okay. Let's try it again because there's, I see multiple shared screens here. So let me try this one. Okay. Now do you see it?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay, okay, good. All right. So, oh, thank goodness. Okay. We talked a little bit about site selection here. We reviewed several sites and narrowed the sites to two sites. And 12th to 15th East Union Street was deemed the superior site based on a variety of factors, most, most important being location and accessibility. And, you know, there's other factors involved that really locating it well for the Fire Department, it was, it was critical to the success of the project. As I always tell people when we do public safety, that the police department can go anywhere. The, you know, the Fire Department really has to be well-located. The findings were also consistent with the 2008 study conclusion that was done earlier, which was a programming and site assessment feature. It had immediate access to the bridge over the railroad tracks and that was really critical for the Fire Department. We did those subsurface investigations to help us refine and determine the site developmental costs so we could carry that as a line item. And I remind everyone, the property was gifted to the Town of Ashland and has currently gone through the ANRAD process and land court process already. I'm going to turn this over at this point to Lindsay Macamur, the Civil Engineer. I have the opportunity to both highlight things with a cursor and, and blow things up. So I will do that if Lindsay asks me to.
All right. Good to know. Thanks, Janet. And, yep, so Lindsay Macamur from Par Corporation. Janet did a great job kind of giving the overview of the constraints as we kind of worked our way through doing extensive due diligence for the site. And so this is going to hopefully give you a little bit more of a visual representation of that. So the starting point we had was the property line. So after the ANRAD process, we resulted with a lot size of about 2.8 acres. And that's the parcel size we were working with. Beyond that, if you want to advance, Janet, we started looking at zoning setbacks. So we have 25-foot front and side yard setbacks with, on the northern side, 50-foot no disturb setback next to the residential zone. So that was the next constraint we layered onto the site. Beyond that, we do, right off the bat, have some significant topography change across the site, more than 30 feet, 35 feet of change across, rising to the east.
I can, I hopefully could do this. Let's see. There's a laser pointer and that, and you can see that, okay?
Yeah, so we're down at 188, at the very corner where we're next to Union Street and up at 223, up at the residential property line and kind of the top corner of the site there. So we've got some significant relief to deal with. And even still, even though it's a pretty sloped site, we do have wetland resources as well. So very early on in the process, we had, almost at the very start of the design portion, flagged the wetlands, of course, to understand the extents. And then did go through an ANRAD to establish the limit with the Conservation Commission. So we do know the jurisdictional line and kind of use that upfront to establish what we were working with. And what we quickly, quickly realized, if you go to the next one, Janet, is that in order to make the site developable, we would have to consider some off-site replication in order to create a buildable footprint for the building. And we're working on identifying the correct site for that at this time. Next is the geotechnical investigation. So in the feasibility study...
Sorry to interrupt you, but what does off-site replication mean just for...
Sure. So we are, since we are impacting the wetland resources onsite, we will be mitigating. So the Wetland Protection Act will require a one-to-one mitigation. So we'll be replicating wetland resource areas. And we are evaluating the potential sites for that. Typically, we did look at onsite locations for mitigation and we're also considering other locations in town with the intention of matching the similar hydrologic features to replicate those wetlands. So that would be off-site replication.
Thank you.
No problem. So geotechnical investigations, we, in the feasibility study, started with those test pits to really get kind of the baseline of what we were working with. And since that time added both a boring program as well as a rock probe program throughout the site to understand the bedrock elevations, understand the groundwater elevations and know how that was going to impact some of the costs as well as where we position the things and how we set their elevation as well. And lastly, traffic analysis is going to be one of the really important due diligence components that contributes to how we lay out the site. And part of that is that since we are positioned right at the intersection of Waverly, Union and East Union, we have to consider how vehicles enter and exit the site. And one of the big pieces that came out of the traffic analysis was recommendations for where the driveways should go. The best place for apparatus access would be inside the intersection. That way, when the lights are all red, there are no cars blocking any access by the emergency response. And then the secondary recommendation would be to put the primary use driveway as well as the police response driveway, which is the same driveway, as far from the intersection as possible, again, to have it be least likely to have a queue in front of the driveway. So that was a big driver in terms of how the site got laid out and that came out of that early due diligence that we did. So all that constraints overlaid led us to develop this site plan. So we have, again, as you can see, at the intersection, we have our apparatus apron coming out into the intersection there. And on the southern portion, we have that generally used driveway as far south as we can tuck it on the site, which means we position the apparatus bay adjacent to that intersection and the three-story portion of the remainder of the building to the south. We do have 69 parking spaces distributed throughout the site. We have visitor spaces in the front, parking along the side and primarily staff, cruisers and admin vehicles in the back. And we are working to sort of accommodate some access to the rear lot via an easement, which is still in discussions with the former property owner. So that is generally the features of the site, proposed site plan. I think, Janet, if you go to the next one. So discussing the right-of-way improvements, in addition to the site improvements, part of what came out of the traffic study, in addition to the driveway location recommendations, was other conditions to help improve existing conditions as they are today at this intersection. So we're proposing some minor changes that will help to get some substantial increases. So one of the concerns that we found at the intersection is because the existing signal heads all extend across the same line across the street, the direction of the signal heads is difficult to discern for the angle of the intersection. So one of the ways we're attempting to mitigate that is by proposing the signal heads on their own mast arms so that we can position the signal heads a little bit better and reduce ambiguity at the intersection. We also have an opportunity to increase the level of service headed northbound on Union Street. So where we currently, yes, exactly, where we currently have only one lane in the existing condition, we're able to actually push the curb line to the south by only a few feet and it get two lanes. That way, there can be a free right-hand turn that can help, especially in the AM peak time with allowing flow-through of traffic that doesn't need to stop if it were all red with a single lane. So in that way, we're getting some substantial increases. We have been working closely with the town to make sure that we're mitigating any other potential or doing the best to improve the conditions at the adjacent intersection to sync the timing of this and preemption with the adjacent intersection. So we've been working to incorporate that into the signal design as well.
Excuse me, can you just say what, on that last slide, sorry? What does the shaded area mean as far as like when it's penetrating? In the, in the area where it's all the way across the street? What does that mean on?
Sure. So those are trenches that will be made into the street for utility connections. So when we get to the utility side, I'll talk through which ones are which about making connections. I think it's water and sewer connections will be over there.
So in general, the shaded area means places where you have an intervention with this project?
Yes. So trenching into the roadway and then repaving over the surface. I will say, one of the things we are proposing is to actually mill and overlay the pavement for the entire extent. So normally where trenching would create, you know, you'd see a patch in the roadway because we need to relocate the center line in order to get that second lane, we are actually going to mill and overlay all the pavement so you wouldn't see the trenching into the road. But yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. So one thing I wanted to emphasize in terms of site layout is snow storage is one of the big considerations we gave. I highlighted and read here the snow storage locations we've designated throughout the site. So in those locations, we've kept trees out of there so that there would be significant space for storage. And it's also distributed throughout the site. So there's easy access for maintenance purposes. We do have all of the storage areas outside of the 25-foot no disturb zone in an effort to mitigate any impacts to the wetlands. So that's graphical representation of what we have for snow storage. And then moving on to grading and drainage. I mentioned the existing conditions. We've got significant topography change. So one of the big drivers with where we put things and what elevations we set them at was driven by the existing topography. So you can see at the generally used driveway, we've got elevation 187. And then as you move up the road, we're up to 195. So even in the roadway, we've got some pretty significant slope. So as such, we've got a split finished floor elevation. So the apparatus bay portion of the building is actually higher so that it can connect and slope away from the building towards the roadway and a lower portion of the building to be more in line with the elevations at the other driveway. And in that way, we're not only able to work with the existing topography, but reduce the amount of bedrock cut that we're going to have to deal with on this site. We do actually, the rear parking lot here, you can see potentially elevation 206 back there. So we do slope up as we come around the building and we're actually having egress on the second floor in the rear, which is the second floor is at elevation 209. So we are slipping up in the parking lots at around 4% and a little bit higher than that, around 6% in that little driveway portion as we make our way up as far as we can in the rear parking lot. We do still are dealing with a 10-foot wall at the perimeter of the site at its highest points, about 10 feet, where we are, you know, working with the existing topography on the upside of it. And we do have kind of the grading at the upside is a swell at the top of the wall to prevent any runoff from the adjacent portions of the site from making its way into the site, which is a nice segue into talking about drainage. So the drainage was a significant design on the site primarily because the existing conditions are relatively natural, right? So it's some disturbed woodland, some gravel areas, but mostly tree cover, vegetated cover. So we are adding a substantial amount of impervious area that needs to be managed here. So we've got relatively robust drainage system, not only for water quality of all those new impervious surfaces, but to slow the flows. So the analysis point we have on the site is where, basically where you see elevation 187. So in the very corner of the site, most of everything drains there in the existing condition and enters into a couple of catch basins that are in the street. So we're matching that same design point. And at the source, we're proposing our treatments or at the, within the parking lots, right? Distributed, so the green boxes that you can see are tree box filters. So we have organic soil media that's going to be positioned in these planter boxes. The water will filter through those systems and get the proper treatment before they make their way to detention and infiltration systems. So the purple boxes, the two smaller ones you see are detention systems. They are not able to be infiltration due to their proximity to groundwater and bedrock. So we do have those, this closed detention systems. And the larger box that you see closer to the analysis point is an infiltration system. So that's the best location on our site for infiltration relative to groundwater separation where we can get some significant recharge for the site. So overall, we're decreasing, yeah, just the conclusion, just the conclusion there is we're decreasing flows in all of our design storm events and we're providing the proper water quality treatment for everything that we're adding to the site. So one thing I did want to zoom in on, just so everyone could see, I know our figures are kind of zoomed out a little bit. I just wanted to zoom in on the back lot layout. So we did spend a good amount of time coming up with the proper layout for this rear and we have it properly laid out to accommodate the largest fire apparatus that would be navigating this site. So on the left there, you can see the turning movements and part of the plans we prepared had a lot of different turning movements, so garbage truck, passenger vehicle, ambulance, as well as the fire truck. So navigating those interior islands is something that was really important. I also did want to highlight that so for meeting the vegetative requirement as well as some of the stormwater treatment needs, we do have those green boxes, again, highlighted on the side, treating most of the impervious area on the upper portion of the parking lot. So just want to zoom in and give you a little context on that rear lot. And I think this might be lastly for me. I've got the proposed utility plan. So we have municipal services connecting to the new building. We are proposing two separate water services. So we've got the eight-inch fire service connecting directly to the main as well as the four-inch domestic water service. And they travel through the site where they enter in the rear of the building. There, the blue lines shown on this drawing to where the utility room is in the back. We have our sewer services leaving the front of the building. So those are shown in green here. And we're connecting into the roadway. So that's the trench that goes farther across the street to the existing sewer manhole, which is where the former service to this property was connected. So we're kind of matching that existing service point. And lastly, we are proposing a gas line coming into the site to be connected to a future main that will come into the road. And connecting to the, the corner of the building there, and that line is shown in yellow. And I think that's my last one. I think I'm going to turn it over to Nancy to talk about some of the landscaping for the site.
Okay, thanks, Lindsay. My name is Nancy Lees with Raydowns Landscape Architecture and we developed the the planting, lawns and planting design for this building. And as Lindsay referred to the tree box filters, those are, oh, they're not actually colored in this plan, but yeah, that's it. There is about ten of them and in all of them, we're proposing use of red maple, which can take some wet conditions and also some drier conditions. But generally, all the trees and shrubs and perennials and grasses that we're proposing for landscaping are all drought tolerant as much as we can find that they'll be drought tolerant and providing some nice spring flowering colors and fall color as well. Why don't we start at the top of the plan along
You want me to blow that up for you, Nancy?
Yeah, if you, if you can, that would be great. Oh yeah, that's, that's better. Okay. We, as you'll see, we, we pulled the walk, the pedestrian walk, town sidewalk off away from the road to provide a safer experience for walkers and pedestrians. And from that comes in a walk to the main entrance of the building, which splits. There will be a ramp on one side of the walk to negotiate the grades. The other will just be a sloped walk. And we've put a small garden between the divided walk there and at the entrance of the official walk coming over to the building. The trees that are shown along Union are elm and pin oak, which are very drought tolerant. And will create great shade for the walkers. And we've, we've held them away from the front face of the building, just so the building is apparent and not screened by tree vegetation. But the trees also will be limbed up. I don't know about all of them at this point, but the ones that are within the sightline of vehicles exiting the main parking lot, the two parking areas. At least eight feet is generally a good height to limb the trees up to. And that's what we would pick at the nursery. So Janet, maybe just slide down the plan. Great, okay. And going to the south entrance, we have some trees for shading the south side of the building. And a nice mass of grasses and native shrubs. I'll run, I'll run through some of the shrubs. I don't know if we have time, but box, boxwood is not native, but summer sweet, red twig dogwood, gray dogwood, bush honeysuckle, inkberry, bayberry, beech plum, rolo sumac, Virginia rose. We're thinking of using the trees is actually an autumn spire red maple, which is more upright variety. Because those, the, the filters are close to the road and, and cars parking. So we, we want that to be a little more upright. We're thinking a smoke tree to screen some of the utility pads. Turkish filbert, which is not native, but it's a very drought tolerant street tree. Hawthorn, sweet gum, Chinese elm, which would be at the front of the site in Pin Oak. And those are the trees so far that we're proposing. And as you can see, Lindsay referred to the snow storage areas in various locations. We, we're attempting not to locate trees within those sites because they probably would be damaged. I notice on the bottom where the road curves to the back, there is a tree there, but that, that's a mistake. That'll be removed. And going down to the exterior dog kennel, we have a tree there. And we're proposing there a special lawn mix. It's called a micro clover lawn mix that will take the abuse of dogs because they'll have an area there and just actually an area closer to the around those lawn areas and get some exercise. And then just south of the kennels, there's a lot of shrub massing to screen the various utility pads and transformers. And then going over to the entrance, the south, the main entrance on the south, over there. Yeah, that, right. Well, we'll have minor landscaping there, you know, big shade tree. I think that's a Hawthorne, so that'll, and then a Hawthorne near the shooting range. So that'll have some nice spring flower color. And getting to the, the lawn mixes on the perimeter of all the parking lots, we're proposing a meadow mix, which will be very low maintenance. Definitely designed for drought tolerance. It'll probably be multiple heights of vegetation, nothing more than probably three to four foot height. And it would probably get mown once a year to keep out invasives. And then we'll also have a mown lawn mix, which is primarily right there, right, Janet, right in front of the, the building. So that'll be a little more manicured. And then, of course, we'll have the, the clover mix for the dog areas. And also to the right of the building, up that big steep slope is, is a meadow grass as well. Mix. And I think that's about it. We could take questions at the end. And I, who is next?
Okay, that is Paula.
Well, okay.
This is an overview, as was mentioned earlier, we are going to be incorporating a geothermal system into the building that will assist with the heating of the building. The green dots you see around the site are the proposed test fit for where the geothermal wells will be. We tried to locate them to avoid all of the site utilities that Lindsay had covered earlier and to keep them out of bedrock as much as possible. We anticipate there's going to be about twenty-three wells needed for the project. We're showing twenty-four at the moment because the one at the northernmost portion of the site near Union Street that's colored red is where the test well is going to be located. And once that is done, it will become part of the overall well field design. The piping from the wells be entering the building towards the back of the building where our main mechanical room will be. And all of the wells also need to maintain about a ten-foot clearance from the underground utilities. And so it just seemed like the best place to place them was closest to the building to reduce that amount of run to the mechanical room and to clear a lot of the utilities that are running throughout the site.
Right, alright. And Paula may jump in if I, if I miss anything, but I wanted to really just go do a brief review of the plan work that was done. And touched a little bit on, Joe I know mentioned a little bit about the, the, the overall site, the size of the site and the the forty-two thousand square feet of building that we were putting onto that site. But this is the main elevation. Oh, it is a split elevation that Lindsay talked about. So the, the apparatus and the main building floor are, are at different elevations. But you, everyone who comes to the site from the public point of view will enter in right here at the main entry. And at the main entry, there'll be a vestibule and then a, a common and shared lobby between all the departments. And there are are four fundamental pieces that work off of that. There's a records room, there's the dispatch, which is a twenty-four seven operation. There's the training community room, and then there's a safe haven right here. So if someone is feeling uncomfortable or any kind of an issue, they can immediately be brought in and brought into a secure room and then exit into the police department for help if they need it. So everything that you see in blue is, is by the, is for the police department and everything in red is for the fire department. And everything in, in the gold color is either shared or mechanical in nature sort of thing. So, so you'll come in, the police department here, this big log bar in the rear is all about detention. The police Sallyports and all of the support spaces that work for detention cells and interrogation rooms. There is, this is the dog area that Nancy was just speaking about. And then up here is the apparatus bay and all the support spaces for an apparatus bay where they keep their gear, where they have equipment stored, compressors, everything associated with the department. So we, so the main floor, if I could sum it up really is, other than the public spaces, is all about public safety operations. The second level is the, again, blue and, and red. Again, they are the, some police support spaces up here, locker rooms, things like that. And then all of the the fire department living quarters are all in this block right here. And those are designed to have easy access to the apparatus store either by way of pool or the stairs themselves. And, and we're talking about the rear exit out here because now you have risen up on the second level, the building in the front, but you're already on the site in the rear. So there are also portions of the mezzanine that are available for use by the fire department for training purposes. And there is also some mechanical space up there. And the third floor is all about administration. There's a common elevator and a common lobby that everyone comes to. And then the blue is the police department administration. The red is the fire department administration. And any, any visitor to the, the building coming into those two departments will come in through those, that point right there and then, you know, go to whatever department they need. I'm going to also share with you the roof plan right now. Cause the building sits in the hillside, we are trying to get a lot of light, natural light into the apparatus bay. So we have these roof monitors that are here that'll provide some nights, nice, really beautiful light into the, the deep parts of the apparatus base. We have some green roofs off of the administration space and off of the apparat- the Sallyport areas. And everything you could see in the yellow is potential solar ready, PV ready areas. So the building will be planned for it and then hopefully at some point, perhaps there will be an install of PV. I wanted to talk about sustainability a little bit. We, we were looking, we originally looked at LEED certification, but because of the site and a bunch of constraints that we were dealing with, operations of building, we were we found that it was going to be very costly to do a FEED project. So, you know, we had evaluated a number of opportunities and anything from geothermal to low-flow toilets. And we did a lot of work early on, spreadsheets, costing of all those different things so that we could look at them as a, as a whole. We had the, a lot of feedback from not only the committee members, but and the facilities people in town, but the sustainability committee. There was a decision, as Joe mentioned, to go geothermal to reduce fossil fuel consumption and greenhouse gas emissions. We've added additional insulation in the roofs above co-re requirements. There are going to be two electric vehicle charging stations on site. Low-flow plumbing fixtures and that solar ready roof that, that we talked about. This is, these are the elevations, the north and east elevations. The north elevation is the main elevation from the roadway. Three-story building here and then the apparatus bays, which is a one-story building, which includes the mezzanine. Sitting at a slightly higher elevation from the, the road entry point. You can see the grade change there. And the basic materials are masonry, everything in the very light color is masonry product. Because of the building being heavy-duty trucks and movement of vehicles around it, we always suggest and use heavy-duty materials on all the parts of the building. And then the other materials are a fiber cement and a metal building with standing seam roof and, and walls here. And so, and then of course, the really important to the town that we learned is, is the clock, the historic clock. It's been a wonderful story that we've worked on. Paula's done a great deal of research onto what that, that clock could be. And we presented, I don't know, half dozen options for them to and this is the one that, that is the favorite. So at this point, you can see the topography changes across the site in the rear. These are the south and west elevations, really from the rear of the site. These, these doors here are all related to the police operation Sallyports. And this is the upper level of the apparatus bays, all those mechanical rooms in the back. And these are some images of what you'll see headed westbound and eastbound from the building. That concludes my part of presentation. So I want to know if you want me to end the slideshow here or we can come back to it at any point. Is that what you would like to do? Am I still on? I can't see anybody right now, so let me.
Are you finished that, your presentation then?
Yes, I have, I have finished. We're open for questions.
Okay. And it's really quick. Is there a chief Alfano or town manager, whoever, whoever else there? Is there anyone else that wants to comment on this?
Chief Alfano here, I can jump in. The current facility that we're in, the, the police station, I'm sure all of you have seen the deficiencies in it. Our, our female officers are out in a dilapidated trailer in the parking lot for their locker room. We have inadequate space within the building. The building is really starting to cost a lot of money to maintain now because all the systems in the building are failing. And because of lack of space, we have to spend thirty thousand dollars a year to rent office space a block away. This type of facility would, would really end all of those, those issues and concerns and give our, our police officers a facility that, that's much safer for them. Our, our detention area, the cell block right now is, is very, very dangerous. Officers are at risk every time they, they handle a prisoner in that, in that facility. We also, we've completed almost all the steps towards being accredited police department. However, we're at a dead stop with the facility that we're in. We cannot become a certified accredited police department in the current facility. If we, we had this facility, we would achieve certification very quickly. And that would have considerable benefit to the town, both from an insurance standpoint, a prestige standpoint. And that would have considerable benefit to the town, both from an insurance standpoint, a prestige standpoint, and an operational standpoint.
Other comments from?
I'm sort of, I'm, I'm happy to sort of jump in just to reiterate some of the points. You know, so we've been working for a number of years to sort of make sure that we really studied. For, from an operational perspective, where the best location is. I think HKT and PAR have really worked really hard on a very difficult site. As you probably remember, Mr. Mr. Fafford did gift this property to the town. And so we have been working within some really tight constraints. And so that is, you know, been probably the biggest challenge from the design perspective. And we, we sort of continue to work through those issues and the committee has been working really hard, not only just on design. But making sure that it is functional and will be operational for, you know, fifty years. In that way, we'll be able to serve the public as best as we possibly can.
Anybody else on any other committees that have been working on this?
I'd like to concur on behalf of the fire department, you know, location is the biggest thing for us. As you know, we have a main street stations located next to the tracks now. Very often you'll hear that truck go out and you'll hear them call over the radio, they're going to be delayed, they gotta go around because of the train. So this is kind of a key spot for us, looking at where the bridge location is. So when we pull out of the station, if we gotta get to the other side of town, we rely on getting right over that bridge and not worrying, is a train coming or not. As far as the stations, I think we've really gone over a lot of that. Both of our buildings are getting old. But the biggest, bigger problem with them really is we're outgrowing them and Ashland has grown so much. I think it's, they have to look into the infrastructure of the town and growing with it. And if we don't do this, I think the town's really going to start falling behind on its infrastructure. So that's just on behalf of the fire department. Thank you for the review.
Anyone else on the, any of the other committees or?
Yeah, I just have a couple of follow-up comments I would like to make. That's okay? Again, this is Joe Maniani. I'd like to thank you all for listening to what we have to say. And if you have questions, please feel free to email them to us or you can ask us this evening. To date, we have had twenty-eight meetings with several more scheduled in the near future to go over certain matters. That, because we're under a time restraint. So this committee has worked diligently over the last two years to try to create and organize. A, a building that would be beneficial for the community and for, and for those who work there. We made some serious design considerations and concessions over the last two years in designing this building. We went to a three story building from, from a two story building. Again, to eliminate the expanse of, of the building, which can increase the cost of the building itself. We've also increased the additional, and I don't think it was mentioned, insulation to the building. To, to help it, to help with the, the green initiative, to keep, to keep things the way they need to be. And with Chief Roby's guidance, they rearranged the apparatus bay. To achieve the goals that he felt comfortable with and, and putting his, all his apparatus undercover. And that's one thing we need to remember is that a lot of this equipment has been left out. And with the type of environment that we have here in New England, that takes some serious, that takes effect detrimentally. To, to the, to the lifetime of, of a piece of equipment. Having it inside a building, keeping it dry and whatever helps, helps that lifespan of that equipment. So this will, this building will help alleviate leaving any and all pieces of equipment out in, in, in the weather. And, and in certain climate conditions. And so we're, we're working diligently with it. This is definitely not the Taj Mahal. Some people may think it looks like that, but it isn't. We've, we sharpened our pencils, and the architects have, and, and I know all the other designers have done as well. And I appreciate all the effort that the committee has, has done today. And we still have more. We still have more work to do. We need to get the, the people out there to understand what we're trying to do. It's not just for, you know, it's not just for the committee, but it's for the entire town as a whole. And we want the town to be proud of this new building. Hopefully it'll get passed and it'll be a proud building for, for everybody to, when they drive by, say, yeah, nice job. So that's what we're hoping to do. And as the board chief said, the security and, and, and the measures that, that are needed to keep everyone safe. In the, in the climates that we, that we're seeing today is paramount to everything. So thank you Dale, and we appreciate all the time that you've allowed us this evening.
Great, thank you. Any, any questions or comments from the planning board?
Dale, I have one comment before you move on to the planning board if I can. So I just wanted to backtrack just a little and just mention another advantage to this particular site. And it's, it's proximity to the high school. And Chief Alfano and Chief Roby, correct me if I'm wrong, but, but our high school is the most populated building. During the course of the day, during, during the Monday to Friday shift. So the proximity to the high school is an advantage. And Chief Alfano, I think you've talked about this in the past.
Yes, we're, we're literally right around the corner from the high school, both for police cruisers as well as Chief Roby's ambulances. So it is the largest concentration of, of students in the town at any point in time. So it's, I think it's advantageous that we're so close to that location.
Thank you. Thanks Dale.
Okay, so any comments or questions from the planning board? Let's do that now.
I have a couple of questions, Dale. This site, I, I drive by this site multiple times a day as it, it lies between my home and my office. So I know, I know this, I, you know, fairly well. I was wondering, first of all, just about, I don't think anyone touched on it, about site lighting. It seems to me a building that probably needs to be fairly well lit all the time. And, and there's not, it's obviously not a very dense area residentially. Around here, but I was just wondering if what the plan was about different types of lighting. In terms of sustainability, but also in terms of safety, you know, around the building.
I can speak to that. As part of our planning board package, we did do a photometric study of the site. And there is pole lighting around the parking lots to make sure those are adequately illuminated. The building itself does have wall sconces at the front of the building that are slightly more decorative. But as you go around to the more functional sides of the building, we've got high intensity and all the lights are LED, so they're very energy efficient. But as we go around to the back of the sites, more operational areas, we've got better illumination, greater illumination on the wall fixtures that are on the building there. So the studies that we did with photometrics show that we have more than adequate lighting all around the site itself. Without actually putting light up into the night sky or protruding past our property lines. So we're keeping it all contained.
And I was, I was also wondering about the site, if there was thought about. You know, given that the sidewalk goes in from the, from the road, if there's thought about benches along there. Or outside areas where staff, people working in the building might enjoy the outside spaces. It looks like the green roofs are extensive green roofs rather than intense, they're not meant to be occupied.
That's right.
So I was wondering if, if that's a, if that's just part of your thought process? Or if there's a reason that you would want to discourage that?
Primarily, we're using the green roofs just because there is so much of it exposed right near the police department offices at the admin level. On level three, that we thought it would be just a nice feature for them to have something nice to look out on to as well as addressing stormwater. And doing benefits for the site, that it would give them a better view out of their offices. And then we had such a great amount of roof over the Sally port area that we decided to make that a green roof as well. Because that's right along the main entrance and access for the firefighters as they go into the dorm rooms. And then Nancy can speak to this a little bit more. We are planning some benches and picnic tables out at the south end of the building for the firefighters to use and up at the main entrance as well. So Nancy could speak a little bit to that as part of the landscape design.
Yeah, thanks Paula. Yeah, we're, we're just developing some concepts for the. As Paul was just saying, some picnic table locations at the southeast entrance, probably two tables there plus a bench. And then a picnic table at the south entrance, just north of the, the dog, the kennel area. And then at the front area, we're planning at least two benches that are closer to that, that curving walk off Union. And then one near, at the landing near the front entrance. And then one near the handicap parking. So that would be one, two, three, four benches at, at the north entrance area. And we're, we probably will locate one, maybe two trash receptacles in various locations. And, you know, we'll, we'll have to discuss to a bike rack whether that's needed or not. Or, and where that will be placed. I was just kind of curious in, in terms of, especially along that front walk, not necessarily in the back parts of the property. If this is a building conceptually, that the, the chief's intended. A, a place where kind of the public, they want to interact with the public a, a little bit. Or one where maybe that's a safety issue. I'm not very familiar with this, with this building type. And so I'm, I'm not sure of the issues involved. But I was wondering what kind of connect, community connection, I guess, that they are thinking of. For this building as a whole. I'm not really sure about that. That's a good question. Can someone else speak to that?
Chief might be able to comment on that.
Sure, from the police standpoint, and I know Chief Roby will have some points from the fire standpoint. The front of the building, we do expect quite a bit of community interaction. We're right there on the main road. It's a pleasant area. One thing we are looking at with the landscape architect is a, a small memorial area for fallen firefighters and police officers. With some benches and perhaps a flagpole and some monuments to fallen Ashland public safety personnel through the years. The, from the police standpoint, the rear of the building, particularly near the detention area, that's a very busy area. We have cruisers coming in and out with prisoners, so we really don't want to make that like a play area for children or.
Right, right.
Also, the, the police canine has a, an indoor and an outdoor kennel area. And it's, it's well protected and fenced, but we really don't want a public interaction with the police dog if the dog is out, outside in the kennel. So I guess to answer your question from, from our standpoint, the front is, is great. We, we would invite people to, you know, hang out on the lawn and, and enjoy the, it's certainly going to look a lot better than it does now, that's for sure. Especially if you drive by it every day. But the back areas, there's going to be a lot of moving traffic, a lot of police vehicles in and out. I know Chief Roby and the fire department will have a lot of vehic, vehicular traffic back there. That could be a more dangerous area for public access. So at least from, from my standpoint, we would pretty much confine people to the front area.
Yeah, that, that's what I would definitely be assuming. I just know that this pathway, even, even as kind of not pretty condition that it is right now. It's still, it's still a pretty busy path for bicyclists and walkers and runners. And even baby carriages to go from like the high school area down into town. And so when it's, it's becoming very nice like this, I was wondering. If that kind of interaction with the public on the front side of the building was something that was going to be encouraged? Or that the departments would be happy about to make that connection, I guess.
And with the lawn area in the front too, officers and firefighters could do outside presentations, especially in these days of COVID. So you can actually speak with small groups outside on the lawn. So again, a very safe area, well off the roadway and, and it should, it's beautiful with the, the lake right across. So we might as well take full advantage of, of letting people look at that.
Great, thank you. Thanks Tricia. This is Nancy again, but Chief Alfano, we're, we're going to be locating the, the memorial area probably in the front. If that seems satisfactory to you. Cause we do have a flagpole, it says new flagpole, but that's sort of in that little triangle area right now. And that's actually a sloping area, so I'm not sure how conducive that would be to memorials. But I was thinking initially of putting the memorials to the right side of the pathway. Near that snow storage area, but we'd protect the memorial area for sure. But you'll be appraised of that design too, when, soon, soon.
Okay, any other comments or questions from the board?
This is Lakshmi. I just have one question regarding the traffic. So regarding the traffic study, I, it was mentioned that for the, there would be a right lane. So that the people could turn right into the complex. But when you come out of the complex and turn left onto Waverly, that lane today is a single lane. Is that going to be widened?
No, so we're, we are actually doing the lane ad just beyond the driveway. Yeah, yep, that's a good, a little bit easier to see it there. So we'll be one lane at the driveway itself. What we're trying to add is as you approach the stop and you're splitting between Waverly and East Union. Usually you have to stop even if you're continuing up East Union. But there isn't really a need to stop because there's no conflict for continuing up East Union. So we're trying to separate the people coming through and continuing onto Waverly. And the people that are heading right to go East Union towards the high school area. So it's gonna, it's gonna allow some more freedom of movement there. But we are maintaining one lane past the general access driveway to the site. So that way, when you're trying to make the left out, it's just one lane that you're turning across.
Okay, and so there's enough space for cars to pull over when say a fire truck or a cop car goes by, turns into the road?
Yes, and we're gonna add, it's not shown yet here, but we've been working with the town. We think it's appropriate to put do not block striping in front of this driveway to make sure that the police cruisers will be able to exit. And then the double lane on the approach to the signal gives a little bit more room for stacking as well. Which should also enable some more vehicles to move out of the way.
Um, just one more question, and this is regarding, I think this is similar to what Trish asked regarding community engagement. Currently, the location is close to the town hall, the library and the Minda school. So the chance for our officers or firefighters to interact with people is more. Was that ever factored into the site selection when we were, when the site was decided regarding community engagement? Or community interaction?
Jen, do you want to take that?
I can, I can, yeah. So we looked at a, a number of factors. Community engagement was certainly sort of implied, not necessarily a, a specific variable. Part of it really, so police officers will, will be out in their cruisers. And they should be out in the community, interacting throughout the community. And that's the community policing model that we use. And so we're hoping that that will continue, no matter where the main station is. And then the fire station again was really about emergency response and the time in which it would take to get over the, the train tracks. There is actually in this design some space for community, you know, that could be used for the community. And that would, you know, potentially increase some interaction as well. And so that was one of the things that we talked about explicitly so that we could work that into design to make sure that we could. Maintain the connection with the community for sure. That's definitely important to both the police and the fire department operations. Yeah, so it's right in the front, that is the community room. And so that could be used, you know, it could be used for training, but it could also be used for some of the presentations. That I think Chief Alfano was talking about. You know, there could be a, a community demonstration, there could be, you know, other community groups could actually use that for meetings as well. Once we, and so there would be that natural interaction as well.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to comment on one thing that I think Tricia mentioned about the bikes. I guess a lot of bikers are a lot, going along here to the high school and back and strollers. And so it sounds like it's a pretty busy area. I think we have a six foot wide, I believe it's six feet or maybe five feet right now. That, yeah, that arcing pathway along Union. Is that wide enough to accommodate bikes as well as walkers? Just to clarify, like, I wouldn't say it's like a, it's a hugely busy now. But it's such a kind of unpleasant sidewalk now. I've gone on it many times myself.
That once it though becomes, as this area starts to become better and better, and especially with the inclusion of this building, I do see it as at some place where people might, might stop, you know, a, along their path.
Okay. Okay, thanks, Tricia.
Any other comments from the board, questions? Then I guess we'll see if there's anyone.
Thanks Dale. I would just say, I think this is, um, I think it's a pretty impressive plan. I think this presentation is, is, is pretty comprehensive and pretty thoughtful and very well done. And I think it reflects not, you know, not just the work of the architects in conjunction with the people, you know, the, the town committee. But I, I do think it also is reflective of a lot of hard work from town staff, but also, um, you know, the, the committee, who's, who, the Public Safety Ability Committee, who's obviously been working on this for a long time. And so, you know, I, I, um, I think overall, I, I think, I, I think what we've seen tonight definitely, you know, goes towards accomplishing the, the, the objectives of, of this project. And I think it's an impressive, um, I think it's an impressive, uh, plan. And thank you for the presentation.
Thank you, Joseph.
All right, thank you. Now, Emma or Pete, I'm on my phone and I, I don't have all these buttons and stuff. So if I open it up to the public, can one of you kind of let people in and out or, or handle that part of it?
Yes, I can call people.
I, I can't see anybody except who's talking for some reason. So, um, I want to a, a, open it up for public comment. And so if you could kind of moderate that part of it for me?
Sure. Well, our first speaker tonight would be Mr. Mark DeSoni.
Okay. Thanks, Pete.
Thank you, Mark DeSoni. First of all, yes, I, what's this, Joe Ruberton was saying, it's very impressive, well thought out and greatly designed. I just want to look at it and say, um, for East Union Street itself, with the exits and the entrances and all that, coming up from 135, were there going to be, uh, emergency flashing lights saying that, that, uh, there's got to be emergency vehicles coming out like, like there was in front of the, you know, Main Street Fire Station, the police station? That's one question.
Yes, so the traffic signal plan is going to have a preemption. So as vehicles approach along the roadway, the, and that was why we recommended that the driveway from the emergency vehicle bays come out directly into the intersection. The presence of the vehicles approaching the station or leaving from the station will trip the preemption, which will put a stop on all the approaches along the roadway. So it will give the emergency vehicles ease of exit and access, uh, from any direction there.
Okay, that's, that's coming up from 135. The other question is basically the same, but let's say you're coming from the exit of the high school coming towards the, um, the building, city building. Is there going to be lights up on that part of East Union Street saying the same thing?
Yes, yes. So all three approaches, so if you were coming from East Union, Waverly or further on Union itself, they will all get the red when the emergency preemption is triggered.
What about from the exit from the high school in that direction coming down towards 135?
Yes. Yeah, if you're coming from East Union, from the high school, you will have a red when the preemption is triggered.
Okay, and, um, if, if anybody who's, who's sharing the plan can show the, those exits with the red arrows, the red split arrows, can they show that?
Uh, let's see. Let's see. That one, is this one you want?
With the red arrow showing the outs, the entrance and the exits. The red arrow from the building is.
This one?
The bold, the bold red arrows.
A bold, one of the site.
Right there, right there, yeah. Yeah, this is why I was asking that, asking that question because the emergency vehicles do have, and rightfully so, do have both ways up and down towards the high school, towards 135.
Right.
But then again, when you want to ride in the street, when you come up from 135 up East Union, that point right there is going to be as wide as it's going to get. Where the lights are and the, the, the sort of white line is the stop line. Coming from there is going to be somewhat difficult. But let's just say if a person was kind of on Waverly Street and all of a sudden they're going to take a, a U up East Union Street, that little space that's there on the right. How can that be, that light, that street light, tunneling like on the, um, right side by the, uh, guardrails, is that going to be incorporated too?
Not sure I followed your question.
Well, there's going to be, there is a U-turn.
Yeah, as you come down Waverly, right. There's a U-turn in both directions almost. It's a right from East Union, but it's practically a U-turn, right? Or you could be coming down Waverly and make the U to go.
Are you talking about this? This movement?
They're very don't. Coming down on, to the point of 135, what's there now with the street, with the traffic lights and the, um, paint, the paint on the road? A U around from East Union, complete turn, go up Waverly, and then coming from the street light, traffic light on 135, come and then do the U, wide U coming up towards East Union. Cutting off, cutting in front of the traffic going down East Union. That's why I want the arrow there for, because you see how the arrow is and how it's kind of, you don't have a full picture? And it's up in the upper left-hand corner, it's just below the arrow. Where the thin black line is, how the corners, the corner in the square.
Uh, this one I hear?
No, down on 135.
Okay.
Yeah, right there.
Okay, this arrow.
Yeah, that arrow right there, that's pointing down.
Okay.
And when you got the site plan with the, with the, with the open space in the, in the corner of the, um, site, site, the site plan there, down there is the point of where the lights are, traffic lights are, and the U-turns. So when somebody's turning off of 135 to come up East Union and there is, and there's a vehicle, uh, emergency vehicle coming down, there's no, there's no traffic like this flashing red, uh, on off red, red, showing that from that 135 U-turn. Is that going to be incorporated?
Well, once they're in the, in the intersection, Mark, I think once they're in the intersection, you can't do much about it. They're going to see the fire truck coming out of the place with all the lights blaring, horns blaring. They'll get out of the intersection. I mean, you can't, eh, once they're passed and under the light, waiting to make a left turn, it, it wouldn't do any good to put flashing lights there or not because they're right in the mix. So they would have to get out of the way like.
Okay, now, I thank you for that, uh, Mrs. Chairman there, but that's going to put a a person stuck in the middle on that turn and seeing an emergency vehicle coming maybe thirty, thirty-five feet away. And they're in the middle of that turn, do they stop? Or try to cut it in tight to, wait, make a wide right to the sidewalk? If they don't see, it's all flashing light, they won't see the emergency vehicle going through that's actually right on top of them. I'm, so I'm not, I'm not waiting for an accident to happen. I'm just looking out for, um, just keeping, keeping alert, especially when that's downhill, East Union Street coming down through the lights. And it happens in the winter, heavy vehicles cannot stop on a dive and a person turning may fishtail.
Mark, if I, if I can, I just want to address that. When, when a fire, uh, vehicle apparatus is leaving the building here, they'll activate a button there that's going to put a red in all three directions. So there will be, nobody will be able to enter that intersection, meaning that nobody will then be able to get past the intersection either. Um, and that'll be all clear in all directions for a fire truck to come out of there, utilize that intersection to go the, the direction he needs to and not have any vehicles in front of him at that point. I, I think that that might address your question.
Okay, um, it does it. Wait, 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 wait a second. That person's voice, that man's voice, I don't have on the screen. Who am I talking to?
I'm sorry, Mark. My name is Lance Hill. I'm with Park Corporation. I'm one of the engineers on the job.
Okay.
Really quick, really quick, that light, that light will change red before the truck probably even comes out of the garage, right?
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
So, so Mark, what they're saying is the light's going to turn, go red and then people will clear the intersection like you would on a regular red light. You make your turn if you're in the middle of the intersection and it'll be clear before the trucks even come out. It's not going to, it's not going to turn red when the truck's already out in the driveway trying to get out.
So as a lifelong Ashland person who remembers downtown, it's going to be just like that with the lights that's in between the old five station and the Yoke Police Station, that light's going to turn red and, and the, um, no, the, the traffic is going to have the red and the green's going to be flashing, you'd be seeing. So that's what's going to happen at the point of East Union both ways. Flashing, flashing red stop the traffic and the flashing green and the si, and the sirens to be heard by the drivers. Okay, one last, one, one last, one last thing.
Just to clarify one thing, it's not going to be a flashing red. Since it's an actual signal, it will be a solid red. All approaches along Waverly, East Union and Union will get a solid red.
So everybody will clear the intersection out, clear it out, and then the fire trucks will come out. Once they're in Union, everybody will be out.
Okay, I, I thought I had one more and now I have an add-on. With those traffic light signals with the solid red, can there be a sign saying above, saying solid red, emergency stop? So the driver can read it and understand it?
Well, it will be solid red during the regular cycling of the signal as well as when the emergency vehicles are coming out. So the red doesn't always mean that there will be the presence of an emergency vehicle.
Okay, and, um, the, um, I think, very last thing, very last thing. The, um, the, the tallest from ground to pointer roof. This is a national bylaw question. How, how high is that?
Paula, can you take that?
I think it should say on the exterior elevations, if you can go to that page, Janet.
Let me see if I can answer that question, Mark.
It should be in the presentation.
Forty-seven, I think, does that sound familiar?
Well, the bylaw is between forty and forty-five max.
So that is to the, and I, I would have to, what I'll have to do is go back and look at the definition of the highest point because, um, you know, it's a gray plane that we have a sloping site and I have to look at the mean grades around it and all that for you. But I, I will check that out and give that answer for you.
And also it's the solidness of the foundation and everything goes. With the wetlands, hopefully it doesn't, but it could loosen up and sink, which could lose you.
All right, thank you, Mark.
Yeah, I think, thanks, Mark.
Okay, so don't cut me off like that, thank you. I understand that I went long, but I wanted to make sure that I had come out in, in the public, you would have broadcast at home, people don't have Zoom. They can have the questions when they vote for this. Thank you, done.
Pete, anybody else?
No, uh, there is no other person from the public currently raising their hand or identifying themselves. I deal.
So, will we continue this to another date?
Uh, yeah, so just, um, if there's no more questions, I just want to give everyone a rundown of the next steps. So, uh, this project is going to go in front of the Design Review Committee because it, the Design Review Committee is triggered, uh, because it's on 135 on, on East Union Street. That meeting date is going to be on September twenty-seventh, which is a week from tonight, uh, with the Design Review Committee. And then the next planning board meeting will be back. We will all be back here on Zoom on September twenty-fourth. Uh, so through you, Dale, the chairman, I would like, I would ask a continuance this, uh, September twenty-fourth, uh, where we can, um,
Continue the public hearing and is, is all, are all the parties, they said they had to get some more information or, or they all going to be ready at that point to continue?
From our design team, I, I think we can answer all the questions and, um, you know, the details that were asked will compel us to them and, um, confirm them with Peter to make sure we didn't miss anything and, and we should be ready to go.
The, yeah, one quick one. I just want to make sure, you know, obviously there's, there's a fair bit of, what I'll say is, my assumption is given, given the amount of wetlands going on in this site as well as potentially some off-site relocation of wetlands based on what needs to happen here. You know, my presumption is this is all on a Conservation Commission and, and Committee and is going, going through that process kind of concurrently as we're starting to talk about this, right? And that, you know, our, our approval of this, you know, will, will follow whatever approvals it needs from those other committees, right, Peter?
That's a hundred percent correct, Joe. The process has already started, I would say, with the Conservation Commission, uh, this past fall when the wetland line was determined. And then through.
Wetland line being the, the wetland delineation, right?
Correct, the wetland line was delineated. And, and yes, they are moving forward with the Conservation Commission at the same time. I do just want to make a note that, uh, I may have misspoken. The Design Review Committee meeting is on the seventeenth of September. Uh, and then our next planning board meeting is on the twenty-fourth of December. I'm sorry, September, not December. But yes, all, all September, all within the same, this month, September.
And what, what would be a good time for that one, seven fifteen?
Yeah, I, I think we should probably start off with this one, uh, at seven fifteen.
So, uh, does anyone like to make a motion to continue this public hearing till the twenty-fourth of September at seven fifteen?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, roll call?
Tricia Kendall, aye.
Joe Ruberton, aye.
Lakshmi.
Lakshmi, Christian, aye.
Dale Buchanan, aye, that passes five zero zero.
Okay, so thank you so much. So Janet, in the coming weeks, uh, I'll be reaching out to you and, 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 and working with Jen and, and both Chiefs and Emma and myself to move this project, uh, to the next steps.
Yeah, thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, all your work.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Does that mean we're to the, we're going to have an update on the Mindes School Project?
Yes, so thank you so much, everyone, for hanging on, uh, in that presentation. Uh, so the second item on tonight's agenda will be a update from the Mindes, uh, School Project. And so with that, I would like to introduce, uh, Bill.
Yeah.
Who is the architect. And I believe Paul Kendall, who is the Chair of the Mindes School Committee, was actually, was on them, was, was, uh, may join in. But, um, at this point, I will hand it over to Bill. Uh, and he's just going to give us a quick run-through of, uh, where the Mindes School Project, uh, is at this current point within the MSBA, uh, project, uh, definition, I would say, and, uh, what the next steps are as that project continues to move forward.
Yep, very good, thank you, Peter. My name's Phil Beatrice, I'm with Flansburgh Architects. Um, I do have a presentation to, to give and I, I may, I'm not sure if I'm a co-host or not. I am now, I guess, so, okay, great. Let me, uh, share my screen and then we can, uh, I know it's kind of late, so, um, I will try to keep this, uh, brief. And we're, and we're, and we're at a very kind of early phases of the design. So, um, just by way of introductions or an agenda, we'll do some introductions. Um, just by way of it, uh, introductions or an agenda, we'll do some introductions, um, we'll go over the site plan. Uh, we'll quickly review the building organization and floor plans, uh, touch upon sustainability. Uh, and then we'll turn it over to the OPM, uh, who's on, uh, on here tonight with us, Mike Quinlan. And, uh, we'll review, um, project schedule and kind of project budget summary. And again, I will try to keep it, uh, really brief because I know it's getting late. Um, we have a, a robust, uh, committee, uh, a robust building committee. Uh, made up of many of the townsfolk with, uh, a vast knowledge and they've been instrumental. In this whole process, getting us to where we are. Um. You know, project management team, um, the OPM is, uh, Jeff D'Amico, uh, Mike Quinlan and Laureen Westerman. And like I said, Mike Quinlan's here. Our design team is, is me, Bill Beatrice, Architect, Kent Kovacs. Uh, he's, uh, the principal in charge, uh, who's not with us today. And also on this line, uh, or on this call, I have, uh, Ramon, uh, Ibar La Chia. Uh, from Simpson Studio, um, Ramon's the landscape architect and Jared Gentolucci. Uh, from Niche Engineering is our civil engineer. So really quickly, um, this is, uh, where we are in the process. This is a continuation of the feasibility study. Uh, that the town, uh, started in conjunction with the MSBA, uh, back in. October of twenty eighteen, I think it was. Uh, we're now in the schematic design phase. We have submitted. Uh, that package to the MSBA for their review and approval. To get to this point, uh, we've met several times with, uh, police and, uh, fire to get their input on the plan. We've had many meetings with, uh, obviously with the school to develop the plan and the layout. Uh, we've had some initial conversations with Conscom, did an initial walkthrough. Uh, we've had several community forums. I think we've had seven to date to update the community in general and, um. We've met with the Tribe Board, uh, a couple of times, uh, all incrementally, all, all along the way. So, um, I think a lot of people are probably very much aware of this project. So with that said, um, I'd like to do, um. I'd like to turn it over to Ramon and Ramon, if you could just introduce yourself and kind of walk us through some of the, uh, site amenities.
Yeah, sure. Uh, good evening, everybody. I'm Ramon Nebarlosia from Simpson Studio Landscape Architects, uh, here in Cambridge. Um, and, uh, yeah, so we're, uh, really excited about how this plan has sort of evolved and continued to evolve. As this project moves forward. Uh, and, and, and this site is, is, is. Particularly great site for, uh, this, this use and it's, it's a really quiet area and it's, it's a really beautiful natural site. Uh, and what we're most excited about, I think, is, is how the landscape, uh, that we've designed is, is, is able to tie within. Um, the building program. Uh, so I'll just walk you through this bird's eye view diagram. Uh, so one, that's, that's the playfield area and, and, and some of these areas. You'll, they'll show up a little bit better on the site plan. That'll, that'll be the next slide, but number one is the playfield. So that's a. Uh, girls softball and a boys' baseball field. Um. And, uh, that's, that's got a direct, clear connection to the gymnasium. That's, um, a big block sort of over near, yeah, Bill's pointing it out. Uh, number two is in reference to the, uh, service road, uh, which you'll see more clearly on the site plan. But it's a twenty-four foot wide, uh, road and it'll handle deliveries as well as emergency access to the rear of the building. Um, what we're most, I think, excited about is, is, is number three, that's the play area. That's right up front. Um, the play area is kind of nicely positioned with good southern exposure. It's great microclimate. It's. But it, it's also located in this great zone, sort of right between the gym, the playfield, the cafeteria and the main entry to the school. It becomes this really great focal point for those kind of visitors to the campus and students arriving to the campus. Um. So, which kind of brings me to number four. That's the designated bus drop-off and pickup. And again, you'll see these zones a little clearer in the next slide, but, um. What's, what's really great about this site is it's large enough that we're able to keep bus, uh, circulation separate from parent drop-off. Um, and then five is, is, uh, the entry plaza. So that's this big, uh, expansive. A paved area that's able to handle all the pedestrian circulation in front of the school. So while students are going to the playground or being dropped off, there's this big kind of zone. So no one feels like they're on top of one another. It's this big, you know, sort of generous area. Where six is the parent drop-off. Uh, again, that's got a clear connection to the main entrance of the school. Another thing we, you know. We like about this is, is sort of the length that we're, uh. Given to the roadways, which allows all those cars to get off of Concord Avenue and queue up within the site. So kind of keep, cuts down on traffic issues. Um. Seven is, is a raised garden bed area, uh, that's located sort of right immediately adjacent to the academic wing of the school. Uh, it's gonna be a really great area for, uh, hands-on learning. Uh, eight is, uh, there's, there's actually three eights on the plan. But the first, uh, is the sort of most generous outdoor classroom area. That's again tied to the, um, sort of garden area. But, uh, you'll see this sort of small, uh, ring encircled by a, a larger oval area. So there's this intimate classroom zone for about thirty students that can gather together. Uh, and there's also this sort of larger grass, uh, zone with lawn and, and large shade trees. Uh, for a larger student gathering outside. And, and what's really great about this is, you know, it's, it's immediately tied to the school. They don't have to cross any roadways or anything. So no matter the season, uh, students can get out there and, and, you know, even if it's just for fifteen minutes and it's really great to just get outside. Um, the, the next eight is, is right in the middle of the school. It's this sort of. Uh, completely enclosed outdoor classroom, um, area. It's gonna be just, uh, paved perhaps with, with, you know, small planting area. And one, um. Uh, tree, but that'll be another great area that students can get outside. It also provides some light into the core of the building. Uh, and then the last number eight, that's, uh, up on the second level. That's gonna be a, uh, sort of spill-out green roof area. And that's gonna be this, uh. Other, you know, out, another space to, for students to get outdoors. You know, the only access from inside, obviously, uh, and it's gonna be this really great sort of front porch. Uh, to the school. And then, so number nine is down at the bottom. That's this, uh, large generous parking area. And, and we can go to the next slide.
Yeah, I think it's, you kind of get a better sense of some of these spaces. Yep.
Exactly. And so, uh, down at the bottom of the page is Concord Street, um, and at the top of the page is, is sort of this existing woodland. That, uh, we're, we're kind of backing up to, um, and the parent drop-off is, is sort of over to the right side. That encircles the parking area. Um, a parking area is two hundred and fifty spaces and it's broken up with some generous tree, uh, shade trees. And, and, uh, perhaps a bioswell to, uh, help mitigate some of the storm water in that area. Um, so like I said, there's, there's this sort of one-way, uh, counterclockwise circulation that allows, uh. Numerous cars to stack up within the site and drop off, uh, immediately adjacent to the entry plaza and main entrance of the school. Uh, and over to the left of the page, uh, the west, we've got, uh, another entrance. This entrance is for buses, bus and service vehicles only. Um, we've got generous, uh, stacking space for up to nineteen buses, uh. And that also drops off into the entry plaza with, with connection to the, uh. Um, main entrance of the school and, uh, if you stay around to the left, that's, uh, the emergency service road. Uh, that's gonna be a one-way gated, uh, with a, you know, an electronic, uh, gate. Uh, that will only allow deliveries and, uh, emergency vehicles to patrol the, uh, sort of outside of the school. And, and you can really see in the site plan, uh, how, you know, all, all of the, uh, immediate landscape areas are contiguous to the schools. So that the students don't have to cross any roadways. There, it's all self-contained in this kind of one, uh, uh, really great pod.
If I could just, uh, if I could just point out a few things, Ramon, not to, just, just to orientate everyone. Um, this dotted line here is the existing Mindes School right now. So our proposed new school sits behind the current, current school. And, um, we will, we will get to like a phasing diagram to show how that can be constructed. But the, I think the key points, as Ramon has pointed out, is, um. It, what this plan does is it allows a lot of queuing for the parents. On, on, to pull those cars off, uh, Concord Street and get them onto the site to stack up. And the same with the buses. And as Ramon pointed out, this, this plan also gives us the ability to separate those two. Um, activities, parent drop-off and bus drop-off. So it's a really nice, um. A nice layout in that regard. Sorry, Ramon.
That's, that's, that was good. That was helpful. Thanks, Phil. Uh, a- a- and so we're able to sort of keep the, the parking. Screen from views off of Concord Street. We're kind of tucking that, uh, over behind these residential properties. But we're also maintaining a large buffer zone between those, uh, properties as well, so that they're not, uh. Experiencing a lot of, you know, disruption from this, the parking area. Um. And, uh, I guess, just to go through these kind of main points, uh, we've got the, the community plan athletics. Uh, like I, I was saying before, they're sort of immediately contiguous to the school. Um, uh, and, and directly connected to the interior building program. Uh, and there's, and, and lastly, there's, there's numerous outdoor learning opportunities, uh, and, and we're kind of envisioning. That, uh, as we sort of develop the design, there's, there's opportunities for the students to actually cross that emergency service road and, and begin to explore the woodlands. Uh, there, there's a really great, uh, tree canopy, uh, with some great pines and, 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 you know, native vegetation back there. So that there's, there's some potential opportunities for some, uh, perhaps future trails or, or, or exercise paths. Uh, you can go to the next slide.
Yep.
Where we talk about, uh, so. The, the, this, uh, you know, we, we've, this is early on in the design process. So we sort of view this as a planting diagram. Uh, it's not really assigning specific plants to specific, specific areas. But, uh, we sort of have an attitude that we'd like to have as many native plants on the site as possible. Uh, we have a pallet containing many large shade trees, uh, sort of really mostly oaks and maples. That'll provide a generous canopy. A lot of this, uh, outdoor area is, uh, exposed to the south. So it's gonna experience a lot of, uh. Sun, uh, for most of the, for all of the year. Uh, so we'll be finding a lot of deciduous shade trees. Um, so we've also provided a pretty good amount of, uh, interspersed within that, uh, some flowering trees. It's just a good way to, uh, signal spring. Um. All of these trees that we're specifying will throw out a good fall color. So that's a good, uh, kind of celebration for when the students become back to school. Uh, they have this really exciting, uh, foliage, uh, on the campus. Uh, so then there, there's another range of native shrubs, uh, that we're using to provide some screening to the outdoor classroom. From, you know, the, the vehicular circulation area. Um, and then, of course, we've got some perennials and grasses and those are mainly focused, uh. To the areas where the entries are. So places where students and people will be walking close to and, and, you know, it's just kind of this. Uh, way to signal that. Uh, so we've got this really exciting layered landscape and, and scale to, uh. Different uses and, and, and much of the, uh, rest of the area. Uh, that's not currently wooded will be, you know, turned into usable lawn. Uh, and then sort of that area along the back woodland will be seeded with, uh, native seed mix. Of, uh, native grasses and perennials, uh, and shrubs. That, uh, in some areas can be mown maybe once a year, or it could be let to grow, uh, wild. And then it will start to sort of return back to that native vegetation that I think makes this site so special. Uh, that's it, uh, for, for the landscaping unless you want to add anything there, Bill?
No, nope. I think you, you pretty much covered it and then some. So, um, but thank you very much. Um, so, um, as I said before, um, just to orientate everyone. You know, this is the existing Mindes School. I'm sure you're all familiar with the site. And we are planning to, you know, the new pla- the, the, the new building is situated behind, um. The existing building. Um, so, you know, how do we get there? Um, so we did develop a couple of phasing plans to illustrate that. And I will, again, I will go through them relatively quickly, um, just in an effort to, uh, because it's getting late. But, um, if anyone has any questions, they can certainly ask me. So phase one, uh, December twenty-one, twenty twenty-one to June. Uh, twenty twenty-three. Um, in this phase, we are constructing the new building. So what this red, that dash red line indicates is the, uh, zone of construction, the fenced-in, uh, construction area. Uh, we are proposing a new temporary access road off Fisk Road. Um, that would allow, this would be for construction vehicles only. And there, and, and that would allow, um, the access off Concord to be, uh, for, um, school use only. So in other words, we're separating those two traffic flows. Construction traffic goes in off Fisk Road. School traffic is off Concord Street like it always does. Again, this is a fenced-in area. The fence will have, you know, screens, uh, scrim on it, uh. Lessen the visual distraction for the students. Um, access into this, um, construction zone would be limited. Uh, you know, uh, we'd limit it, uh, so there was no construction vehicles during parent drop-off. And, 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 uh, pickup times. Um, we'd limit idling, so there'd be no idling on Fisk Road. Um, that would be all pretty much typical. So then phase two, uh, this is July twenty twenty-three to August twenty twenty-three. Now, at this point, the new school is constructed. We've constructed most of this parking, parking lot. We are still using this temporary access road, um, because we need to. Because in this phase, what's happening is the, um, the existing building is coming down. We are, uh, finishing construction of, um, this, uh, parent drop-off loop in this park. And, and we are finishing construction of this, uh, emergency drop-off loop. Next phase is, uh, phase two B. This is, school is open in September of twenty twenty-three. So. We have, at this point, uh, our construction zone shrinks down to this area here. Where we are completing the bus drop-off. We're doing some playground work. We're doing some field work. Um, but the parent drop-off loop has been complete. Um, the bus drop-off loop for this phase will temporarily use this, uh, emergency access road. Um, so buses will discharge there. Um, this will be used as a temporary play surface. Um, until, uh, this playground is complete. And then, uh, finally, phase two C, this is September of twenty twenty-three to May of twenty twenty-four. Um, all the work is, is complete. The playgrounds come online. Um, but the ball fields will need at least one full grow, growing season, uh, before use. So, um, that gets us through the site, uh, looking quickly at the, uh, building organization in general. Um, the building is divided up in, eh, eh, like in thirds. Um, there's a, uh, community wing that is the gym and the cafeteria. Uh, there's this, uh, enrichment core. Um, and then there is the, uh, academic wings on, on the side. And the idea here is that we are separating the community, um, wing, uh, from the academic areas. And throughout the plan, the special education, uh, spaces have been dispersed, uh, within the academic pods. Uh, looking closely at those academic pods, um, each grade has its own, uh, part, pod. And they are stacked vertically. Um, and they all access, each one has access to these common areas. Uh, on each, on each of the two floors. And you'll see that a little bit, uh, clearer and when we get to the floor plans. But, um, this is a good organ, this is a great organization that we worked with, uh, with the school. Um. To kind of, uh, condense and cluster these, uh, houses, these academic houses together. Looking at the floor plan, uh, this is the first floor plan. And here you see how those spaces lay out. Uh, the community spaces of the gymnasium and the cafeteria are, are off to the west. Um, you enter the main lobby here. The admin suite is this block in orange here. So they have good, they have great visual control over the entry, over the bus drop-off, the parent drop-off. They're kind of front and center with clear views across the site. And then going deeper into the building, this is where we have the academic pods for the third grade, the fourth grade and the fifth grade. And this is that common room. And this, and so the thought here is that these classrooms, they have access to the, this common space. And this common space is, uh, linked to, uh, some enrichment spaces like art. And then, um, here you can see the outdoor learning areas. This is the interior courtyard of the building. It's a great way to get natural light down into the center of the building. And one of the things we are asked to do as part of our design through the MSBA is locate, you know, future expansion. So, um, this plan can easily be configured or to add another pod. And as our design moves forward, we will keep this area clear of utilities and that stuff. So in the future, um, you know, if needed. you know, if needed, the building could be expanded upon. Second floor, very much a continuation of the first floor where, where we have the academic pods. You know, access to this common area adjacent to this art room. We do have the media center and a STEM project room. And these spaces have access to this outdoor learning space on the second floor. So it's a very compact and innovative plan. So we've done a couple of just quick watercolors. We're, we're in the process where we're identifying the materials, but we, we haven't flushed out colors or, 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 or ratios of different material. But in general, the building will be brick utilized, maybe some metal, some precast. We're looking at some possible slate textures in it. But this watercolor gives you, this image gives you a sense of the scale and the composition of it. There's a nice little clock tower feature front and center highlighting the entry. And this kind of gives you a good perspective of the entry from the children's point of view. And that's kind of what this building is all, that's what this building is all about. You know, the learning experience to those younger, younger childrens and, and children, and how do they experience the building? This is another view of the east side of the building where Ramon pointed out the outdoor learning area and the guarding beds. These would be the classroom wings. And again, this just kind of gives you a sense of, of that space. So looking at sustainability, it's a, it's a, it's a key driver with the town, and it's been a key driver of this design. The building is, is, it will be LEED certified. We, we have super insulated the walls and the slabs. We have exterior mounted sun shades on the, on the windows. We are utilizing a geotherm well field of forty-two wells that are providing fifty percent of the peak peak load of the system. And we do have, we are putting in the infrastructure for future photo takes on the roof and, and on the site. We are currently tracking an EUI of twenty-four point five, which was, which is really good and was one of the goals of the original RFP with the town.
Bill, could you just go back for one second to define that E, EUI, please?
Yeah, it's the, it's the value of, it's the ratio of energy of the energy that the building uses per the area of the building itself. It's a, it's a rating measure. We've worked, we got two very, we've got two fantastic engineers on our team. One is the green engineer. They've worked with us as our sustainability consultants. And we've got Haley and Aldridge as our geotherm consultants. And along with Vanderweil, our MEP engineers, have been working kind of, they've been working all in tandem to develop the, the building systems and try to get to that low EUI.
Joe, EUI is just energy use intensity. So it's a per foot measure of how much per square foot energy you're using on a year, year-over-year basis.
So a lower value is better, lower, lower intensity uses per square foot?
Yes, yes.
And at twenty-four and a half, this would be comparable to other schools of this magnitude in the Commonwealth, right?
It would exceed probably ninety-five percent of them.
Yes.
Wow.
Yeah, yeah.
So, yeah, so thi- this is the EverSource just actually came out with a new program for large buildings. They're just now rolling it out, and that, that requires an EUI below twenty-five. And so with our, our current modeling, we're able to go into that program, which enables some future regates.
Got it.
But no, this is, this is probably one of the more sustainable schools in, in the state.
Thank you, Paul.
We have an exterior, we do have a little animation. I can run if, if, if everyone would like to see it, or in the interest of time, I think we can move on. It's, I don't know what the, what the committee's pleasure is. You guys want me to run the, the model, the animation?
Quick question. Sorry, the future expansion that you mentioned, I know we're not talking about immediately, but is that on the northeast side of this, where you have your outdoor seating, I mean, outdoor learning area?
It, it, it will impact that, yes. It, it, it does, it does come out here. Yep.
Has, has anything been taken care of, how the hybrid learning methods that is in terms of planning? Has that been kind of considered? I know, even though it's an elementary school, has that been kind of taught through the design process?
So hybrid learning?
Yeah, it's kind of, kind of, it's great that you have these neighborhoods that you've created in this, the community zone and the classroom zone. So, so it's creating a nice neighborhoods through the space. But with hybrid, with kind of the COVID situation that we are, we are kind of looking at larger, wider corridors, for example, to make sure that we don't have like a one-way traffic and things like that. So has that something being taken care of on the micro level, on planning or on the macro level, on the planning for the school?
I think that, that I'm not quite sure I can answer that. I mean, it's, it's been, it's been discussed at the school level. If we had, you know, if we had maybe some of the school staff here, we could talk about it, but it's
I could probably, probably answer you that. So if you know what Mindez looks like right now, it's long and drawn out. And if you want to get from point A to point B, people are passing each other. With, if you look at that, what's on the screen right now with those three pods, the only place where there's one-way traffic at all, or, or two-way traffic in an, in a hallway type area is the main entrance to each of the pods themselves. Otherwise, there's a common that is there, and then a wide space that you can go around to the enrichment areas and then over the community side. So as, as it relates to flow, should we find ourselves in a situation like this again? This, this would let itself a lot better for us to handle that. And given the amount of outdoor learning spaces and things like that, you have access to. So this would be much better suited than any of our current school for, for those purposes.
Thank you. Curious, because we're talking about a building that's probably three, four years from today. So just curious of how far we've talked through this design process. Thank you.
In light of just the, what you just said there, my, my understanding from the timeline that you shared, Bill, was that it sounds like students would proposed current timeline, students would be in this building in September twenty-three?
Yes. And we can, coming up, yes. And you know what? We can, coming up in the slide, we'll walk through the schedule a little bit more in depth, too.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's only three years away. That's very, I mean, that's pretty real. So.
Well, I would propose, given the, the time we've spent already, that we skip over the, now we can come back to it. But I think we have some other information to get through.
Yeah, that's fine. So with that said, I will turn it over to Mike, and you can walk us through a schedule review and a budget summary.
Intense, yeah. To the next slide. Hi, everybody. Mike Quinlan, Senior Project Manager from Compass Project Management. We are the owner of Project Manager for this project. And it's great to see everybody here tonight. I just wanted to just do a quick overview. Given the time we have left here this evening, walk you through the schedule and budget, and then we're happy to respond to questions. So Bill has put up on the screen here the schedule from where we are to date right now, which is at the end of schematic design, sort of the end of third quarter twenty twenty. So over the next couple of months, we're going to be preparing for town voting and a special town meeting in the fall. And subsequently, a ballot for the debt override for the project. So that's kind of the next couple of months, near term. Should the town approve the project, we would move into what's called design development. And that would be just taking the design that we've got that Bill has shown here and taking it through and detailing it in more more detail and, and bringing the design further along, selecting systems, making some key decisions about what's in the building, finishes, et cetera. And during that phase, we will start a more detailed permitting process. We'll be engaging this group along with other permitting authorities to start to get, flush out any issues that need to be addressed in the design before we go to construction documents. And then during the construction documents, that's where we work out the final details of the project, make sure it's fully designed and good for bidding as we enter the construction phase of it. The current approach for this project is what's called a CM at risk or a construction manager at risk project. And so sometimes that involves bringing on a construction manager early in the process, which would allow the project to do some early packages for site work and foundations and potentially steel, et cetera, which allows us to get a jump on the project from a schedule perspective. It also allows us to bring on contractor more as a partner, as opposed to just sort of a hard bid number that we are bound to take the lowest responsible bid in the normal GC contract market. So you get just a different level of contractor as well, given the size of the projects. That seems to be where we're heading. So then they, during the third quarter of twenty twenty-one, we'd start to generate what's called a GMP or a guaranteed maximum price with the, with the construction manager. We would bid out the other trades and have final numbers and move into construction, which we're estimating would be approximately about twenty-one months for this project. And that would bring us to, as, as Bill alluded to in the logistics plan, that would bring us to a school opening in the fall of twenty twenty-three. Subsequent to that, we then need to deal with the existing structure as the kids are moved into the new structure. And we need to do some hazardous materials, abatement, and then subsequent demolition, and then wrap up some site work, which we're estimating that will take just slightly less than a year or a fall that up. So that's a little bit on the schedule. Bill, can you go to the next slide? So these are just some key milestone dates. As noted, we're, we're going to have some approvals in town. We're going to work on what we call a road show, just to inform the public before the votes over the next couple of months. So we'll be working with Paul and this, and this school building committee to develop that, as well as with the design team. Should this face, you know, an approval, or should it achieve an approval in the fall? We would then start design development, finish up permitting by fall of next year and break ground in October of the, of next year. And give us an estimated school opening in twenty twenty-three, and then completion of the abatement and demolition of the current building. So we'll start in October twenty twenty-three, and then that would be completed a month later. Next slide, please. So how much will it cost? Here's our current project budget summary. This is obviously a moving target. Things, things sort of change in between different categories in terms of what the overall budget is. But this is the budget that the school building committee has approved. This is the budget that'll be presented to the public in the fall for approval for a debt override. You'll, you'll see how it breaks down in terms of the different categories, the, the construction of the building itself, the site furniture and equipment. Then what we call soft costs, having to do with paying consultant fees for the designer for project management and clerk of the works, which is included under us, and other miscellaneous administrative costs. And then contingencies, just to, and make sure that if things arise during construction, we have funds available to deal with them. So the projected budget appropriation that would be requested would be eighty-three point three eight seven million. You have already appropriated one million dollars for this current phase for the feasibility study and get, which gets us through the end of schematic design. So that's why the total project budget is a million dollars higher than the appropriation, because you've already appropriated a million. The MSBA maximum total facilities grant will be negotiated as we start to shake out all of the numbers. The, the town does have a fifty-five point five seven percent reimbursement rate. And however, the, the MSBA has different caps and different things that they sort of, you reach points where anything beyond it, the town is on its own and, and needs to pay for on its own. So the effective rate is never the eligible rate at the fifty-five point five seven. So that's why if you run the calculations, the maximum grant right now is, is a lower percentage than that fifty-five percent. So we're projecting at this point that the town's share of the project cost would be somewhere between fifty-six point nine and fifty-eight million dollars. And that would be requested at the fall town meeting and subsequent ballot. And I think that
That's it. Yep.
Last slide. So, so I, we're open to questions. But I know this is important, too. So we're happy to answer any questions that the many, many have aboard the student.
Yeah, maybe, maybe Peter, if I can just frame it. I had asked Peter to, to put this on the agenda. I know we're roughly a year out from formally coming before the planning board. But I think it's important to show you where we are along the way a couple of times, get feedback at any point you, you want to give it so that when that time comes, it's a project you're familiar with and that there's no surprises and, and hopefully goes, goes well next year. So, so we're not looking for anything at this point in particular, but any feedback now or feel free to email us or contact us any way along the way. We'll probably touch base once or twice again before we're formally in, in front of you again.
Thank you, Paul. So.
Go ahead.
So, Dale, you know, I think at this point, you can, you know, if there are any Pliny Board members that have any comments or would like to make any, you know, asking the questions, I think that would be appropriate. But as, as Paul and, and Bill and, and Mike and, you know, Ramon pointed out, Jared, that this project is, is, you know, it's well on its way. However, there's, there's a lot of more hurdles to climb.
Okay, any, any comments from the board? Okay, then. I guess, thank you very much for the presentation. I'm sure we'll be seeing you back here a lot.
We, we will.
Yes.
Thanks for your time, everyone.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Anything as well, there's a lot more detail that they had to do for this behind the scenes. So if there's the site plans you've seen, that there's a lot more detail behind them, if you do have any more pointed questions that, that we'll be able to answer.
Okay, thank you. And so I guess our next agenda item will be one twenty-eight Main Street?
Correct. One twenty-eight Main Street.
Here to talk, tell us about that.
So I believe Dan, the architect, is, is on the call. How you doing tonight, Dan? So just to update the Pliny Board, since our last meeting, we did approve the changes below the roof, below the gutter line down. I walked over on the site today, and as many of you probably realize, that the siding has been the siding which the Pliny Board approved at the last meeting has, which I believe has been completed. The work to the front door has yet to take place. And the window trim, obviously around all the windows, has been taken, has been completed along with the siding. Today, I was able to walk over to the site and get the samples of the two two, two asphalt shingle examples or samples. One with, was, was called weathered wood, and the other one was called driftwood. Additionally, I picked up three samples of metal roof. Additionally, I picked up three samples of metal roof. Which were all sent to plenty more members within the email today. The examples or the samples do exist in my office. And so that's really where we are right now. And so Dan, I'm happy to turn it over to you. To 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 walk through.
Yeah.
Materials.
Great. Yeah. Yeah, so again. About the weathered wood and driftwood samples in the last meeting. So I just wanted to run through those two. And I'll have to apologize, Peter. I'm not sure that the the weathered wood. Fully sent via email. So. Just wanna show that now. That's on the screen.
So so that represents, just to square up here, so that represents the weathered wood shingles.
See the difference there?
And 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 the metal flashing on the eaves on the third floor windows is 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 what? Is that one of the samples that was provided today to Peter?
Yes, so we suggested slate gray with the driftwood and then. With the weathered wood, which I'm showing now, we suggested a musky. Musket gray, which was a little darker. I just talked to Carlos before the meeting. He said, you know, the company wasn't able to provide a sample with that. But he has picked out several similar samples that. You know, we're obviously open to the board.
So so is the color of the eaves in the rendering that we're looking at with the weathered wood shingles? Is the coloring of those eaves the musky gray or is it it is not? Is it just it is another color?
In the weathered wood.
In the picture that's up there right now. Yep, you've got the weathered woods selected. Yep.
Yeah. Yeah, that was intended. Have them. Which right now Carlos wasn't able to get a sample of. So. We'll just have to take a look at what is available to.
I mean, can you can you match the shade for this rendering?
You know, I think like I said in the last meeting, it's pretty tough to match it exactly, but. Match exactly for the rendering. So. You know, we we tried our best to get it as close as possible.
And can you can you toggle back and forth on the two different roof colors?
Yeah.
Weathered wood, right?
Yeah. So that's the driftwood again. And weathered wood. Personally, I'll just say that I feel like the driftwood is a little too light. You know, with the with the siding color, it. Gives it a little more of a older feel that not in the traditional way or either. It feels better in the weathered wood sample. At least that's my personal opinion.
Anyone else on the board have an opinion?
And I agree with that. I like the one that is up now, which is is the weathered wood. I think it's important now that we have the samples that we're able to walk over to the site and kind of confirm that what we see. And what we see in real life is actually. What we see in the rendering looks good when we're standing there on this site as well. And I think then we'll be able to look at some of those metal roof colors next to the other colors too. But I I think this is looking like a nice. You know, a nice a nice use of these colors. I think these go together pretty well on the rendering. But it's always important to see it in in real life, even difficult as it is during COVID.
Absolutely. I just wanna bring up a few other points from. Meeting. I know we talked about the the overhangs themselves on the dormers. So. I did talk to Carlos about that as well. So for the side dormers. Currently, what exists is twelve inch. You know, I I feel that that dimension works pretty well. It doesn't look like it's a. I feel pretty comfortable with that.
So that 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 twelve inches is what what we have been looking at all this time? Like that's existing unchanged or twelve inches is the is what we're seeing in the rendering changed?
Sorry, say again.
So you said that the you gave us a dimension of twelve inches. Is that what we're seeing, what we have been seeing currently on the sides, which we said have said looks very long? Or is that what we're proposing to go down to? Or what does it? What is that number of twelve?
What we're proposing. You know, I think.
Whatever it is now. So whatever it is right now physically, it would be reduced to be go down to twelve inches.
Is it on this rendering here on the side? Is that the scale? Is so twelve inches is gonna look like that?
Sorry, you kind of cut up.
The the rendering we're looking at now on the sides, is that twelve inches?
Yeah, we're we're showing twelve inches there.
I think that looks all right to me.
Yeah. And so was anyone able to get? I mean, I see guys working there. So is anyone able to measure? What is there now on the front and what is there now on the side as requested?
On the front was five inches and on the side was twelve. So and I can pull a picture up that they just took of. The rear. So so you could see that the twelve inches is there. If you could see my mouse and, you know, looking at this next to the rendering. I would say it's very close to what we have in the rendering, which I'm pretty happy with.
So. So it's this is getting confusing. So.
The change in the roof style over those things, but not the amount.
Is that right? That the roof style is changing, but not the dimension? The dimension is currently twelve inches and it will remain twelve inches. Is that what you're saying?
Exactly, yeah. Sorry if I wasn't clear, but it is staying twelve inches.
It seems like a lot. It seemed like those, maybe the design of the roof over it or something makes it look that way. But they seem like they stick way out right now.
It looks bad.
So if you put that other roof on there, it's still gonna probably look like it sticks way out.
Okay. Yeah. If if you feel that. Looking at this picture, it feels like it's sticking out too far, then I think we could adjust that. If we agree on a dimension that maybe six inches would be better in this application.
And what's on the front? Five inches?
Five inches, yeah.
Is that with the new roof is five inches or the way it is now? So it's gonna stay the same?
That's what the that's the way it is now.
So there's a five, there's a five inch eve on the front dormer.
I mean, I think you should try to match that as close as you can.
Yeah, let me see if I have a.
The only thing I'd say, you know, is it's it's once you throw, once you throw those angled sides on it, you know, does it? Chop it down?
Yeah, let me go back to the rendering. Sorry.
And on the front, have they been?
Those dormers come out. See how much further they come out? They're buried on the side. See?
Yeah.
Buried by roof.
So I I think if the board agrees to change that dimension. To six inches, then I I think that might be what makes the most sense.
So basically, because we were asking for the dimensions and have it. Well, at the last meeting, we don't really have any more new information other than just. Numbers that are being thrown out, right?
This it's getting kind of difficult, obviously, because now we're now we're being told that. Before we were looking at that we may change the dimension. So I thought we were gonna be seeing an example of that today.
But we're not.
Because we know there's a difficulty with these windows because they don't, we like the look of the front. But the windows are constructed differently on the side. So again, we are having to do some guesswork here. Between. You know, if we say, yeah, let's make them all five inches. But the dormers on the side aren't the same as the ones on the front. So maybe that five inches would look terrible. But it hasn't been modeled, you know. So again, we have very little. You know, we're we're being asked to select something without seeing it. And I don't understand what the difficulty is in modeling that.
Understood. I'll just say, you know, I'd like to look in the rendering of it at twelve inches. Which is why we were proposing it that way.
That's the that's the twelve inch dimension that you said currently exists. So it's not changing. When we see those overhangs in real life, when we look up at the building, they look really big. So what you're saying is that, hey, I think just by changing the roof pitch, they won't look as big. Right? So but we're not actually changing the overhang of the roof. So some of these things need to be, if it's twelve inches now, we're saying that we're not changing at all. It's still gonna hang over the exact same amount, only the roof on the top is gonna be different. Right? So that that may be true, it may not be true that the that they. That they they. I know look that much different, look that much smaller with the roof on top different. I I find that a little hard to.
And I think for me, part of it is that the like on the front, it looks like there's five inches on all three sides. On the way it is now, it's like twelve inches on the front and four inches on each side, which makes it look. It's not proportional out. Am I understand what I'm saying? Like it sticks out like a.
That's that's exactly right, Dale. That's exactly what's happening.
And it looks like the innovation in the back has a different dimension going on. The image down that you just projected seems like a actual site condition. And that looked a little more different than what's going on in the front and the side as well.
Well, I'll just say we are planning on reconstructing the roof on the front dorm. Which hasn't been addressed. So that side overhang that Dale was speaking about. That will exist, that the five inches around.
Yes, but I'm what I'm what I'm saying is it's proportional. It looks nice because it's the same. You know, same eve basically on all three sides. When the way it is now, it's like a big giant in the front and then the sides of the window, there's nothing. That's why it looks kind of like a duck bill sticking out because it's not proportional to me. So I don't know if that's what this this new rendering. It doesn't look on this rendering like it sticks out as far as it does in real real life at this moment, but.
So I I mean, I I'm I I'm fairly confused at this point now as well. So I'm gonna try to just state back here what I think I understand about what's going on. So in these two front windows here, which I'm circling in red, can you see that? Okay, so what what you just said, Dan, is this roof line is going to be reconstructed to create. What we see in this rendering, which has a five inch eve.
Correct.
Okay, but what's physically on the building right now, if I go down there and stand outside of it, is not what's in this rendering, right?
Correct. There there is a five inch eve on the. But the the roof style is different, so you won't have those side overhangs that you see in the rendering.
Got it. Okay, so. So that's what would need to happen to deliver the image that we see on these two front dormers circled in red. As well as as well as I presume, what about these?
Yeah, that that whole dormer is gonna be reconstructed.
Which whole dormers? This this one and this one? Like?
Both the vents?
Just the the vent dormers. Right now it's a little larger.
Notice the new new drawing of the roof to incorporate the straight lines instead of the witch's hat. It's like it's getting straighter. But. I I don't know.
Okay.
I thought I I was under the impression we would see the, if this is it and it's twelve inches, it's. I don't know. It it looks different, but it's if it's the same, I don't know how that's gonna.
Go ahead, Trisha.
If I just go back to the.
Can you zoom in on the image on one of the side dormers so that we can? No, yeah, and do it on the actual rendering. So you can see, while we're here, you can see here. That on the side, there's a twelve inch overhang on the front, right? And there's zero, basically zero overhang on the side. It's like a half an inch or whatever the side this, the width of the material.
Makes it look fun.
Exactly. So there's no side. But if we look at the rendering. And if we can zoom in on the rendering on the side dormers.
Sorry.
Yep. Can you zoom in on the side? Yeah.
Looks like they have a little bit.
Yeah, so now it looks like, you know, that the. If the if that's the twelve inches that has been maintained.
This looks the same.
Yep. So there is a little bit on the side now. It's not twelve inches, of course.
It's almost like a molding on the side or you have fascia.
Yeah, there's a little bit of eve now on the side in order to get that shape of the roof in.
I think that's the part that looks funny. It's it's not even all the way around.
Well, it potentially is making the that twelve inches, it potentially is making the twelve inches look smaller. You know, but it's still obviously uneven, you know. But I think that's maybe why you're saying, well, it looks okay. You know, from far away, because I do think maybe that little bit of eve is making the twelve inches look. But that doesn't mean it's what we want. I'm just trying to figure out the dimensions as well. I mean.
I mean, to me, with a mantered roof like that, it should be close to even all the way on the sides and the front. Otherwise it gets it a different, you know, I keep going back to the duck bill thing, but it just like, it's really sticking out in the front.
No, I agree, we all, I think we all thought that, so in, in other words, if, if you, we kept these little side eaves, you know, maybe they're five or six inches, and we push the, the front back to that five or six inches, what I'm afraid is that that roof, that roof on top is gonna become really flat because it's just, you know, the whole dormer wasn't constructed properly. Um, but that's what we have to deal with, so I, I don't know, is it possible to have them build one of these as a sample? Because, or can we look at a rendering that shows?
Some dimensions.
These dormers back to five or six inches in front? Um, because we're just not, we're just not being shown the options that we're looking, that we're asking for. So we can't, we can never decide because we're not given, given the information, meeting after meeting.
I think the main issue with pushing it back is how the, the metal roof relates to that. Um, so it might not go up as start roof, um, the way the metal meets it, um, but we can certainly model it.
And is there, is there, if you pushed it back, pulled it back a little bit, and then made it a little bit wider, is that, do, does that help any? Just a little bit of on the sides or? Because I know what you're saying, once you get back too close and there's not enough.
Well, I think that was. Yeah, so I think that was the basis of the conversation last meeting and, you know, I took a look at it, I thought, you know, twelve inches would be a good dimension with the relationship of the metal roof too, so.
I think our problem is, is that if we have twelve inches right now, we have been saying for a long time now that twelve inches seems very, very deep and awkward on these windows.
It does.
Right, and so before we say, yeah, now we love twelve inches, we would like to see something different, you know, um, either in, in the rendering or in a mockup onsite, um, so we don't wanna, we know what twelve inches looks like, but it's, it's hard to say that something else, you know, a different dimension won't look better.
I, I just think it needs to be more in line with the front, it just looks so different.
It's obviously easiest to change it in the rendering and maybe we'd be able to tell that way, but so far it hasn't been changed in the rendering, the twelve inches. If that's what it is on site now, so far the twelve inches has not been changed in the rendering. It seems like an easy request.
Uh, just to step in here, Dan, is that something that could be provided with indoor, just to kind of, since we did get the samples today, would it make sense to schedule a site visit, uh, as a posted hearing? Um, and, and would planning board members be available for a site visit, uh, if that was acceptable?
I can be available.
Yeah, me too.
I can.
I can too.
Okay. Um, Dan, do you think this would be the best idea to kind of cut through, uh, I don't want to say, you know, red tape, but, but kind of cut through some of the, uh, back and forth uh, between the planning board and you and your team as the architect, uh, in Carlos?
Yeah, yeah, I think that makes sense.
Okay.
And just to throw it out there, I think as far as renderings go, along that side rendering, we have one, two, three, four, five dormers, right? You know, if one of them can be rendered with a five inch overhang all around, like the front, and one could be left exactly as shown, and one could be shown with, you know, an eight inch overhang on the front and an eight inch overhang on the side, you know, so we can actually see them. Um, you know, that would be showing us variety that we could say, oh yeah, that one looks too small, oh, that one looks too big.
I agree.
Okay.
All right, so is that possible, something like that?
Yeah, we can do that.
So then, as far as the other issues, it's the dormers, you don't have the, you're working on the doors. Um, as far as the gutter up, it was pretty much the dormers, right, and the vent dormers.
Jingles and dormer cover materials.
Yeah. Okay, well, I guess we have to.
And if you do, if we do a site visit, I think we should, you know, we, we would, it would be ideal to try to cover all of that as a, as a posted meeting, as a board onsite, right?
Uh, yeah, we would have to be in, in mass, uh, due to COVID nineteen regulations, and we could be, uh, obviously onsite, uh, social discipline, you know, practicing best po, you know, best practices regarding COVID. Uh, but I think, yes, that would be a posted public hearing, uh, with the town clerk.
And Dan, I'm sorry you're having to take the heat for all of this, because obviously they're one that's having to come in before the planning board each time. So I don't know if this is a matter of time that someone isn't saying, yeah, Dan, we want you to spend your time on this to figure this out and to give the planning board what they need. Or if the, your firm isn't being paid to do that, I don't know, but I'm, I'm sorry, you have to be, personally have to be put in this position, but it, it's very strange that we're not getting the specific things that we're asking for. I feel, I, I don't, I don't think we've been that unclear, but I'm sorry you have to take the heat for it.
That's fine.
Uh, just to kind of throw a couple of dates out, would anybody be available either next Wednesday and or Friday? Uh, Friday, I think we, we could probably meet in the morning. Um, however, Wednesday or Thursday, uh, next Thursday i- i- is fairly, uh, busy until in my mo- my, next Thursday I'm not available, but next Wednesday and Friday I would be available.
You mean during the day sometime?
Yeah, I think during the day, uh, would be best.
I, I can make either of those days work.
I can do Friday.
Friday.
Would, would nine to eleven on Friday be a good block?
Yeah, that, that would, that'd work.
Yeah, should be fine for me too, nine, somewhere between nine and eleven on the eighteenth.
Uh, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm good. Dan, would that work for you?
Yep. Uh, yeah, could you confirm, uh, hour and get back to me, I guess?
Yeah, I think we should do nine, we, we can do nine o'clock.
Okay.
And get it and, and do it, uh, and we can meet, um, onsite, obviously, and then obviously, uh, please, we'll just make sure that all, all present are en masse and social distancing.
Yeah, so just to, just to restate it, Friday, September eighteenth, between nine AM and ten AM, everybody doing onsite visit at one twenty-eight Main following COVID procedures.
COVID pro- procedures, and I'll bring the samples over and whatever samples, Dan, you can collect with Carlos. Um, and any edits to the renderings you could provide, you could, we could print out copies. And, uh, hopefully we can kind of, uh, have a direct in conversation about, you know, these, the eaves, the overhangs and the material, uh, to, to, to try to get this project across, you know, across the finish line.
Can we have?
Yeah, does this give them enough time to make the changes? We're giving them exactly a week to make the changes, right? Like if they're gonna.
Well, they're gonna make it in the rendering, not the building.
Not in the rendering, oh, okay, not in the building, okay, okay.
And I don't know about the, if the front door will be done by then, but it'd be nice to see that.
Could we have, um, could we have a laser pointer on hand for that, uh, visit?
They don't work great outside in the daylight, just in general, but.
Okay, fair enough, sorry.
I, I think I have one I can bring, but daylight is so strong, they're, they're really hard to, someone might have a super powerful one, I don't know, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have a really long, uh, measuring stick you could use to point.
Thirty sto- three stories up.
No comment, anyway. Um, okay, sorry, yeah, fair, fair point about the laser pointer, um, okay.
So then, that's where we're at, we're gonna meet and go over it next Friday. Hmm, yeah, I think that's the best, I, I think that's the best solution to, uh, to, to move this project forward. And are they going to provide the three, three different, like, dormer samples, one in the same rendering, so we can look at it ahead of time, maybe?
Yeah, I, I could get, uh, the updated side dormers.
So, so you would have for that meeting, so then you, you would have for that meeting a rendering which, which, which speaks to Trisha's ask, which was showing the side dormers in a few different lengths, a few different depths.
Correct, yeah.
That'd be great.
Okay.
Any other? Any comments, anybody? All right, go ahead, Pete. Since it's not a public hearing, uh, we can just continue the matter to, uh, the posted public hearing on next Friday at September eighteenth at, uh, nine AM. So do I have a motion to continue this hearing until Friday the eighteenth at nine AM at the job site?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, roll call.
Trisha Kendall, aye.
Lakshmi Krishna, aye. Deepa Venkatesh, aye.
Joe Ruberton, aye.
Yep, you can and aye, that passes five zero zero.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you, Dan.
Okay. Do we want to do the minutes?
Meeting minutes. I have to say, I mean, I'm, I'm just, I, I feel sorry for, for Dan here, I feel like he's, uh, I feel like he's being sent out to, to deal with us without given, being given any time to work on this project. Some, something's going on, it's, it's just weird, and I'm not happy about it, so.
Yep, I, I agree.
So we're looking at meeting minutes?
Yes. Uh, yeah. Someone tunes in right now, they'll wonder what the heck's going on.
Can I put the minutes up, you want to share them?
Just staring.
Deepa, did, Deepa, does your resume on there sound, uh, is that all correct?
Trisha, I was just looking at that, I was like, oh my god, that's me all over that page.
So, did, did they, did they get it all right there?
Yeah.
All right.
So the, the, this meeting is August thirteenth, and this is where we tried to get into this more detailed list of punch list items. Um, but it's not, the, the subsequent meeting is a meeting where we said we approved, we did the memo and said you, from the, from the, from the gutters down, you can do what's in the rendering, right?
Yeah, that's the meeting on the twenty-seventh.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Um, on one oh six, um, metal flashing is different than metal roofing. So it would be better to have that state metal roofing because metal flashing is, is something different. We're talking about the roofs on, on, on number three, correct?
Uh, yes.
Yeah. So and is that, what is that, install metal, let's say metal roofing on the third floor, should that comma be there? It sounds like we're putting metal roofing all over the third floor. So install metal roofing on the third floor dormer windows. Uh, you probably don't even need the third floor, they're just dormer windows. There's, there's only, our windows are only at the roof level.
And bay windows on first floor.
Yeah.
Does that work, Peter?
Uh, yeah, no, that works a hundred percent. That was it.
Yeah, it could be third floor dormer windows and first floor bay windows or something.
Windows.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll make that change.
Um, in terms of row, uh, rows one twelve and one thirteen, twelve Pine Street Final Review Building Colors and Storefront Windows, this is postponed. Is there, why was it postponed?
I think the applicant's gonna come back, the applicant, uh, Charlie Zabudo is gonna come back later.
Okay, so just like post, postponed, postponed due to app, applicant request for continuance, is that, would that be informative?
Yeah.
He did request a continuance and we approved the continuance, right?
Well, it's really not a public hearing, Joe, so it doesn't really have to have that continuance, this is more of just the, the clerk to, to, um, to meet, there, you know, he did meet the condition within his permit, uh, which, which he did submit the construction drawings, which we kind of looked at, I think these are just details. Um, and so he was just going to come back at a, at a later date, uh, when acceptable to review this.
So because it's not a public hearing, we don't need a continuance.
Correct.
Got it. So, but just postponed that request of applicant, that, that probably is good.
On bullet point four on one twenty-eight minutes, do we need to say, uh, roof colors, approved roof colors or?
Because we didn't approve them yet.
No, provide samples of the approved colors, but it's left the roof out.
Uh, that's a good point, Lakshmi, I'll, I'll correct that.
Yeah, it, because.
Metal in the, uh, yeah, shingles and metal.
Shingles and we have the shingles in the metal.
Everybody good with the minutes?
Um, just a question on the voting. Um, just a question on the voting for. Um, at line one thirty-five to one thirty-seven. There's a vote of three zero one. But there's four votes of aye. So. Either someone must have abstained, which isn't listed.
Uh, Christian's on their tw- he's, there's Christian Buchanan, aye, Kendall, aye, Ruberton, aye. A second, yeah, okay, yeah.
So.
Should be four zero zero if that's how the vote fell, right? You're right, Trisha.
Yeah, that, I think that's just the typo.
Okay. I mean, I know there was a meeting minutes I abstained from cuz I wasn't there, but I can't.
It was July sixth, I think you were not there for that, Trisha. Weren't you out the first week of July?
No, I was out. Later, I think the twenty-third, maybe?
Got it.
Um, I, I don't know, I was, I was. That was the special meeting we had, I, I was there. For all of this, at least I made motions and stuff and, oh no, that. July sixth. That was a, that was a Monday meeting, I, I'm sure.
That was a Monday meeting, I believe we had a me, a Monday meeting because it was an error on, on our part.
Right.
Uh.
Yeah.
For the vote, to just to confirm it.
Yeah, so it was definitely, I know I was definitely there, that was for the, that was for the eighty-one West Union, right?
Yeah, I think so, yeah. Yes, that was eighty-one West Union.
Did somebody one, is she abstained because she wasn't at that meeting?
Yeah, I think it's gonna be the meeting minutes that happen. Next, like on the ninth, I think I wasn't there, yeah. If, if we met on the ninth, it seems like we did.
I think we did.
Yeah, that's the, the next one was, the next one was the one I wasn't there, July ninth.
Well, we can confirm that from the video, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just correct that or, either way, it's either four zero zero or somebody said abstained. Alright, everybody okay?
I think so.
So, is someone wanna make a motion to approve the minutes from?
Let me just.
Hold on a second, Dale, Trisha.
Hold on, I'm just trying to see, when are these? Oh, this is, never mind, August thirteenth, okay. Nope, I'm good, sorry.
Oh, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of August thirteenth with the changes we talked about.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, roll call?
Trisha Kendall, aye.
Lakshmi Krishna, aye.
Joe Ruberton, aye.
Dale Buchanan, aye, that passes five zero zero.
All right, uh, just to kinda wrap up everything tonight, thank you so much, everyone, for staying on late, uh, after the. The two big, uh, one public hearing notice and then, uh, with the safety building. And then the Minde's school update, so, um, the next meeting's gonna be in two weeks. And I do hope to have MAPC back, uh, to give a up, re, uh, updated presentation. On the downtown zoning. And it.
The next, the next regular meeting, the next meeting will be on Friday.
Yes, the next regular meeting, which would be the twenty-fourth on the third, would be the twenty-fourth, which would be a Thursday night, so. Um. That meeting, and actually, I think it makes sense just to have that on a regular meeting and, and not try to do something else. Um, however, we'll have the Public Safety Building back, uh, obviously tonight, I think was the big, a much. The big robust presentation, just to make sure everyone, uh, to give everyone a, a, the major outline for that project. And then, uh, there is a new application, uh, for the Bank of America. Over at three hundred, uh, Elliott Street, which is in the, uh. Right off of one twenty-six, they wanna add a little bit of, um, security lighting, uh, at the back property line. Uh, and so that application will be on, on that meeting as well, so. Um, and then we'll kinda move forward, so there'll, there'll be three items on the next agenda.
Okay, okay. Anybody else have anything to add?
Nope.
Okay, someone wanna, someone would like to close the meeting?
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting at ten thirteen PM.
So moved.
All in favor, roll call?
We gotta get a second, right?
Oh, yeah, you need a second. Trisha Kendall, aye.
Lakshmi Krishna, aye.
Joe Ruberton, aye.
Dale Buchanan, aye, passes five zero zero. Thank you and good night.
Thank you.
Good night.